So I'm going to call this meeting to order. It is 6:00 PM. This is a regular meeting for Tuesday, October 7th, 2025. Does that go off?
Yeah, it did. You're good now.
Okay, good. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
I will. Tim Hale.
Here.
Stephanie Nowers.
Here.
Dee McKee.
Yep.
Maxwell Sumner.
Present.
Bill Gamble.
Here.
Dmitry Fonov.
Here.
Ron Bernier.
Present.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Okay. Is there anything any of the members would like to pull from the consent agenda?
This is Dee. I would like to pull, if I can now, RS 25094, AM 25117, and AM 25124.
Madam Clerk, did you get those? Okay. Is there anything else anybody else would like to pull? Okay. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Hearing none, then the agenda is approved as pulled and presented. You all rise, please. Deputy Mayor will lead us in the pledge.
To the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no minutes to be presented. Thank you. There are no minutes to be presented. Agency reports. Do we have somebody from the cities here? I don't see anybody. Do we have anybody from the school district? Okay, I don't see anybody either. And I don't see anybody from the state of Alaska. Well, I guess we're all from the state of Alaska. I mean, somebody that wants to give a report. Okay. And there was an Assembly School Board meeting, but there's no report. And Public Relations, does any of the Assembly have public relations report they would like to give, or no? No? Mr. Brown, do you have a report?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Madam Mayor. So this evening, we're going to do a couple of things with this Willow Wall presentation, but I'm going to invite Jason Ortiz, and Wade Long to come up here and present on the Willow Wall Community Cleanup. So we want to talk through and provide a report to the Assembly about what occurred, kind of what was accomplished by... This will probably be the largest cleanup we ever do, quite frankly. It'll be hard to match it in scale and scope, but we wanted to provide you an update and kind of an outbrief on what happened, what was accomplished. And then we also wanted to recognize the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints. They provided the... almost all of the volunteers, well over 200 volunteers. And so we wanted to take a moment to recognize them here, once this is concluded, for their support of this project, because honestly, this would not have been possible without a large-scale volunteer effort. So with that said, I'll turn it over to these gentlemen, and they can walk it out.
We're trying to get it up on the screen. Oh, thank you.
Yours is different. Go ahead.
You want to be there? Pointer's right there.
Thank you, Ms. Manager, Madam Mayor, Assembly Members. Jason Ortiz, Deputy Director of the Planning and Land Use Department. So I did want to also say Wade Long, the Development Services Manager, is also going to help give a co-presentation, because we were a team on getting this project done, and it's a big, big part of a team getting it done. So we're going to kind of co-lead this. And what I wanted to do really briefly is just spend a few minutes and talk about where this project started from, and kind of give just a little bit of the public some of the insight on what we did and how we did things for extremely cheap and able to get a lot accomplished. So this Willow Wall project started probably, I think, about early August, about four to five weeks before the actual project took place. And I went to Manager Brown with the crazy idea of trying to clean up Willow Wall. And Manager Brown's like, if you think you can pull it off, pull it off. And, you know, we ended up reaching out to the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints and specifically getting in contact with Mr. Richard Payne and Chad Rice, who I know both of the gentlemen, and I tell them this idea, and they're like, oh, this is going to be really cool. What timeframe next year are you thinking? I said, I'm thinking in about a few weeks to get this done, and specifically in about three or four days. So after a lot of discussion, the project evolved. I came back to the team, working right next alongside here with Wade, bringing our entire team together in the Planning Department, excuse me, and we pulled off logistics. And like no other, I mean, it took a lot of effort. We had our legal team helping instantaneously with everything that they can do to get everything. Because as you can imagine, a neighborhood with 452 parcels, we have to have permission to go onto these people's property. We didn't want to just clean up the junk and trash. We wanted to go through and change the neighborhood. We wanted to go through, when you visually drive through, we wanted to see a change. So that included lawn care, you know, rubbing trees, pulling all the junk, all the trash, all the vehicles, all the junk, everything. The dilapidated buildings that were there, they were causing blight and issues with the troopers. We wanted to bulldoze those buildings down. So it was a huge effort. And I know probably our attorney was like, oh, my goodness, what are you trying to do to us in a short time? But we were able to pull it off. They were able to pull it off, giving us all the correct forms. Our internal team, our GIS team, digitized that process so that we have an app, and we can just click everything, put the forms into a viewer, so we can see green on a GIS Esri layer, and just made it all happen. So that's just a smidgen of, you know, what occurred and the people that take place in this borough that we work with, all these great coworkers. But the project ended up coming through. We pulled this major project off in a short time. And I'm going to let Wade talk about some of the statistics of what we actually did here. And then we'll follow it up and talk to you about some of the after-plan, after-care, and how we think that this type of project can be replicated. So I'm going to turn it over to Wade Long.
Thank you, Jason, Mayor, Manager, Assembly Members. Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints, so without you, it would not have been possible. I think they had a calling earlier this year saying, not just... So on September 11th, I think they usually do service, and this calling this year was like, branch out to your community, what can you do? And then Jason had a vision, absolute visionary, answered the call unbeknownst to himself. And I reached out to them, and they said, yeah, we'll do it. And like he said, within five weeks, we were able to pull this together. And what he described is just a smidgen of what all transpired in a very short period of time. So he's a visionary. My part to play was, I was in charge of setting up the operations, and I worked with GIS to use Esri technology to build the field maps and survey 123, where we could collect all the data and be able to track all this stuff. You know, how else are you going to know that everything is clean or not? And so we were the... GIS served us completely with absolute joy. I mean, it was just such an amazing interaction with GIS, for sure. So let me just go through some statistics, because I did the operational part. It's how I was going to do the boring data here also. So like he said, there was like 452 parcels. We actually went door-to-door to 427 of those. And because, you know, some of the parcels are just dirt. And just so you guys know, about 67 property owners declined our help. You know, they had their... Willow Wall is actually a pretty beautiful neighborhood, just need a little help. And so 67 declined. We weren't able to make contact with 175 property owners. But 178 we made contact with, were able to cling to completion. There was just a few others that were just too great for us. And so we have to revisit those, which we'll get to at the end. There were 270 volunteers, 270 now. So I'm going to take... I did set up the operations for this, but this was an overwhelming support. So by day three, I was overwhelmed, I'm like, let's just do what we can. Okay. These volunteers primarily made up the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints. So with this in perspective, the first two days, it was rainy and cold. Okay. Their team not only showed up on the morning of the first day and worked all the way through, they showed up on the next day. And the evening, because we actually had two youth groups, one from Mossill, I think one from Willow, one from Palmer. And there was like 30 kids out there that were just working just as hard as these older folks, people older than me, in the daytime in the rain. Everybody was in the rain, everybody was working hard. They had the best attitude ever, absolutely the best group of people you could ever imagine working with. They never let up, and they kept showing up, and it was a blessing. The other type of volunteers were, you know, there was borough staff, the manager showed up, mayor showed up. Assembly Member Sumner showed up. He was picking up some trash. He's like, hey, you know, I got like a front-end loader and some dump trucks. It was like, I said, what do you want me to bring? And I said, all of it. So he came down, and he was bulldozing houses. I mean, we got like a lot of... We got approval for that, okay, thanks to law. Assembly Member Fonov also showed up. He had the biggest front-end loader I've ever seen in my life. And he just was like, load it up, load it up, load it up. And we were just loading it up. It was quite phenomenal. Best attitudes ever you could imagine, no matter what they came in contact with. I mean, Chad here, at the end, he did not look like this when we were out there in Willow Wall. He was covered with grime. He's not just the contact that helped organize this. He got dirty. The manager got dirty. Jason got dirty.
This guy is a hard worker.
So I can't speak enough about the volunteers that showed up. But they were from across the area, across the state. There were some state employees, there were some other people that identified themselves, lots of different types of volunteers. It was a huge, huge outpouring. It was very overwhelming. So we removed about 39 vehicles. According to the data, this slide, we just got data today that debauching actually pulled out 54. And part of their gift to the project was that they were going to reduce the cost by 10%. So we only got charged for 49, so it's nice. 2.6 tons of hazmat were removed. Yeah. Mike actually helped. Mike and Jason actually helped do a truckload of these batteries. Like this, this is probably tall. They were dense, dense as it gets. And I think they did get a back strain, you know, for that one. Because I think there was like 12 or 13 of them. There's actually one of the last slides, there's a picture of them over in the corner. And on the property that they did, but it will also show the picture that'll be here at the end will show the efforts they did when they put their backs to it, the impact they made. So this equates to about... We took out 240 tons of trash out of there. So just let that sink in for a moment. 242 tons in three days. Thanks to the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints and Brother Broncos. Alex Strawn wanted us to be sure to know that that was equivalent of 40 African elephants. And it's important that we realize that it's like, we have 61 40-yard dumpsters here. It was actually 62. But these are not the small dumpsters that you're going to see at the restaurants, okay? These are the big yarders, okay? These are the big ones. 62 of those things. So it's like almost each person that was there carried out a ton of trash from that neighborhood. And so this is a... All the major cleanup activities in Willow Wall are finished, and the projected expense for all that work and effort was about $65,000, approximately $66,000 to the borough. Money well spent, for sure. And this is the property... Does this have a laser light on it? I just want to point out these batteries.
The screen's distorted, it won't show.
See, right there, both that 40-yard dumpsters are all batteries. Mike and Jason.
But look at the difference. Look at the difference right there. That's what you guys did. Thank you. Thank you for that. So I'm going to turn it back over to Jason.
Well, thank you. Thank you, Wade. One of the key things I forgot to mention is what also was instrumental in this is the FISH organization. FISH is an organization that exists in Willow Wall. They're all residents. Some of them sit on the Community Council for North Lakes. But once we got rocking and rolling and we got everything going on this, we sent mailers, they organized a barbecue. We got the community together, rallied them, got signatures, talked about it. We presented at the North Lakes Community Council. Again, government constraints and trying to keep things cheap, we got all the businesses involved. We got a whole... Here, go ahead and... I'm going to actually talk about each of these and just mention them, because I want their names recognized. So again, FISH Organization and the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints. The Hottie-Hottie Espresso was the espresso stand right into the entrance, a brand-new business, new business in the valley. They opened their parking lots. We staged at their parking lots, and they were offering discounts to all of the people that helped and continue. They were like, how can we continue to make this a success that continues to go on? Alaska Waste, when we first talked to Alaska Waste, I said, you know, I don't want to meet, talk on the phone. Let's meet in Willow Wall and walk the streets and then talk about this project. We did that. And after that conversation, they said, how can we help? And they said, we will donate all of our services, just pay the fuel costs and some minimal fees. And that's how we kept these costs down. Matsu Water, second they heard about this, I think FISH reached out to them. They donated all the water for all of our volunteers. Chepoz provided severely discounted food, which FISH paid for, the borough didn't pay for. Select Physical Therapy, money donations, North Lakes Community Council, substantial money donations to FISH to be able to make sure everyone was fed, and incidentals were purchased. That makes it difficult for government to do. Everything was given to a nonprofit. We made this happen and made it efficient and good use of time. AK Muse House, DC 907 Diesel, Alaska Sweet Vapes, all of those donated cash. We needed things on the fly, things that were a little bit difficult for government to purchase. They stepped right up, opened their wallets, made it happen. Red Valley Services and Brilliant Alaska, these are two lawn maintenance companies. We just randomly cold-called lawn maintenance companies, said, hey, we have this project, and we can't pay you, but can you help? And they said, sure. And they came, they showed up with big equipment, some big brush scrubbers, like on the Skidsteer brush scrubbers. They showed up, and they got a lot of work done. And they just went house to house to house and knocking out all the lawn maintenance and getting things done. Very cool. So big shout-out to those guys. Fonov Construction, so Assembly Member Fonov, he showed up. It wasn't his district, and he showed up to help. And he brought, like they said, a giant piece of equipment. It was very, very useful. We learned a lot. We learned a lot from this. And then Assembly Member Sumner, Sumner Company, he showed up. He knocked down two of the most egregious properties. We have junk and trash and blight and crime, and the troopers are very familiar with. It's now just raw pieces of land. I guarantee you this time next year, you're probably going to see two houses there. So it's going to be a good thing for the community. Rent-Handed Productions, I wanted this whole thing to be captured in video, and I reached out to videographers. And they were like, 15K, 20K. I was like, yeah, we don't have that kind of budget. So this gentleman here is actually a member of the Church of Jesus Christ Latter-day Saints, and he said he would do it for like a smidgen of that price. And so we paid him money, and he's doing a whole video production of this with some also stuff that we can share on social media, so people, the rest of the valley can see it that can't attend here tonight. DeBach Salvage and Towing, again, he offered to do this, discount, not only discount the price, but also chip in and give 10% free. And then Matsu Borough, we talked about some of the employees, but I think Wade wanted to just highlight some of the others in there.
Thank you. I would really like to... First off, you're exactly right about FISH. Abe, would you mind standing up? Abe here represents the FISH Organization. He's from Willow Wall. He used to live there, he grew up there, he serves now. Thank you, Phil.
I want to say, big day. This was emotional, the few days that I could get to again, to see a project that I started out with the neighborhood at 77 tons, and you guys killed that, okay? Like, it took me seven years for you to set 77 tons with just local money. And these two girls right here, they are... They're the... Every day I saw them. Thank you, guys. I mean, this is crazy. Hope we can use this model for other neighborhoods. There's a lot more neighborhoods. We could do this with more planning. And I would love to be a part of the other neighborhoods, too.
The feeling's mutual, Abe. Thank you very much for all you did. I didn't want to say that this grown man just rolled up to me while I was there. He's just overwhelmed by the transformation that's happened in Willow Wall there. Thank you, Abe. I would also like to really give a shout-out to Law for sure, Erin and Denise. Like we said, hey, can you do these waivers? And somebody went on vacation, and then somebody filled in. And without them getting those done, we couldn't have even started knocking on the first house or signed the first volunteer. So like he said, within five weeks, and they stepped up and did this. It was all miraculous. You know, I also wanted to shout-out to O&M, Chad Frye over there. We wanted an extra truck. We wanted a passenger van. I think in the whim of it, we said, can we get a box van? And they're like, here it is. And I also want to shout-out to Hugh Leslie. We were looking for an extra dump trailer, and he's like, let me do everything I can to get that to you. So he made it available. I really want to shout-out to Amber and Mandy, who are the program coordinators for the private property program. I would say because of their efforts and because of the standard they have established, the high level where they take these blighted properties and they clean them to the dirt. They orchestrate that regularly. It's ongoing, actually. It started last year. Jason, of course, again, a visionary. And I really want to... I'm a new manager here. I've been with the borough for approximately six months. Just got my interme valve. And I brought all my Development Services staff down in the training room, and I explained what our goal was, and it was a call to action. And I said, who's with me? Every single one of them raised their hand. Can you imagine that? Every single one of the borough staff and Development Services that are on my team raised their hand. They wanted to do it. They were there. Almost all of them were there every, all three days in the rain, from the morning until we helped out with the youth group in the evening. They never complained. They never pushed back. They never whatever. And actually, I got very spoiled, because anything I asked for, I was given. So it's this kind of where the new expectation I have here. But not only were we able to do this project with all my Development Services staff, but we also had continuity of service still at the permit center. So all my permit staff were there to support all the public that came in. So there was minimal impact. It was imperceptible to the public that something grandiose was going on. So I really appreciate you giving me a chance to say this. And if I forgot somebody, please let me know.
I think that's about it. That's probably about what we have for our presentation.
I'm sorry. Emergency Services. They stayed there. They were available to us this whole time. I even asked for bullhorns, and Casey came out with four bullhorns. Anything I needed, I'm telling you, I was able to get from the borough. This family is tremendous. I'm moved. I'm very lucky to have been chosen to work here, and so I'm very grateful to them. Thank you.
That's it. Conclusive presentation, Madam Mayor.
So the mayor's going to go down to share a token of our appreciation with church members, yes. Mr. Sumner, Mr. Fonov, if you would join her, please do a little photo op here. I see Brad moving, so that's good. Gentlemen, if you'd come forward and face the crowd.
Brad, make it happen.
Make sure our other media folks get a shot here, too. Anybody else need to come in?
Amy's not going to be out done.
Thank you.
Assembly Member Fonov said I missed a page on the back. Back was just concluding what we had and talking about some of the aftermath. Like, we're not doing a one-and-done type of thing. We're trying to address some of the root cause problems. Because some of them, there's drug issues, some of them have some crime issues. We're doing some joint meetings, some meetings with law enforcement. Our legal department's going to look at some options of what we have, at tools at our disposal. And we're also going... We've also been working with some nonprofits for substance abuse issue stuff. So we'll be reaching out to the Health Foundation. They were there. They got to witness some of it here. I was in contact with them ahead of time. They got to go see it. And so the FISH organization, there will be an ask from them to help with some of the, some other issues that they got going on in the neighborhood. So it's not just a cleanup, pull-out. It's a different approach. We're going to take a full wraparound approach and how we can actually solve it. And the idea is to go back in a year or two and see Willow Wall change. So that concludes the presentation. Thank you.
I just wanted to also give a shout-out to the manager for creating the kind of environment that brings this forward. And Jason Ortiz is the one I appointed to the planning commission, and it was the manager, she stole him to hire him to the borough. And I'm still a little bitter about that, but obviously, it's been amazing. And I did go out there, and it was like just the amount of effort that went into it. You could see they had like volunteer forms, things you don't even think about, you know, volunteer forms and the property owner releases. And I was out there, and it was like showing up in an army base, you know, they had check-in, and then Dmitry's running around. I've never seen him so high up. He was in his loader, and it was just mind-boggling. And Jason's like, jump in the truck with me. And we zoomed around the neighborhood, so it was super cool. And I can't say enough thank you that they've been said, but to the volunteers and to the church and all the other folks who made it happen. It was pretty cool.
Yeah, Deputy Mayor?
I just think it's so awesome that church and community can work together.
Further report, sir?
I do have a couple of more, a few more updates. They're very brief, though. And I do want to say this real quick, Madam Mayor. Like, private property cleanup wasn't my idea. This was born up here by the Assembly. And it's easy to do stuff when you have clear direction and the resources to do it. And so, I mean, and again, I don't want to get into slapping ourselves on the back over and over, but in the end, I need that. We need that as a staff to be able to go out and function where we know what you clearly want us to accomplish. Good things like this can happen. So in all fairness, I think that's where this idea was born, and that's where this whole concept started. So lots more to do, but a really, a really solid win. So shifting gears, I just want to make sure that somebody called your attention to, there's a couple resolutions under introductions tonight for state legislative, or state and federal legislative priorities. So just to call your attention to that, we'll have a public hearing next regular meeting on the 21st. But if you have thoughts, changes, additions, deletions, the next two weeks, or yeah, the next two weeks give you the time to kind of mull that over. If you have amendments that you want staff to prepare, please let us know. I also wanted to call your attention to the Talkeeta Dyken Revetment. So we are working on... on developing a scope that we will bid out and get quotes for work to do some repairs, probably somewhere in the $250,000 to $300,000 range. But we'll see how that develops. There was a state disaster declaration, so we are seeking state monies to fund that work. But I wanted to call your attention to it because it is likely, we may get those quotes and have to move forward with that work before, when we don't have an assembly meeting early in November due to the election. So I'm just giving you a heads up. We may, I may execute a manager's waiver, and if that happens, I will report it back to you via IM later. But wanted to give you the heads up that that likely will happen because that work would exceed $100,000. And then lastly, tonight, we're gonna try something a little bit different on the public hearings. We're gonna do, we're gonna try to eliminate the staff reports upfront on those unless it's a complex one. Like, for example, if it was water body setbacks, we would have a staff report. But for some of these, most of these, if you read the title, they're pretty self-explanatory, and it's a way to kind of cut down some time on the meeting, and we'll just go right to the public hearing. But staff will be available if you have questions after the public hearing. So, we still have staff available to answer questions. We're just gonna see if we can kind of keep things moving and get a little bit better flow. So I just wanted to let the assembly know about that. That's all, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Attorney, report.
I don't have much else to add, other than to echo a little bit about what Manager Brown just said. You know, a lot of this stuff, I go to these municipal attorney conferences and, you know, junk and trash, rundown properties. It's a nationwide problem. And, you know, Mr. Ortiz actually presented to our Alaska Municipal Attorneys Association the past two years in a row about our cleanup efforts. And people are amazed at what we're doing. And to echo what Mike said, it does start here. You have the political will and the backing to support the staff in going forward and doing all this. So, it truly is a team effort. So, that's all I have.
Madam Clerk, report.
Your clerk's report is in your red folder. Also attached to that is the Joint Assembly Planning Commission for next Tuesday. And I also just want to note, and I'm gonna probably embarrass her, that Amber has been working with Jason and helped with the Willawha, but now she's also helping us with the election.
The next item on our agenda is citizens and other correspondents. Are there any comments from the assembly on citizens and other correspondent? Okay. And then, Madam Clerk, would you please read the IMs into the record?
I am 25204, reporting conclusion of contract number 24156B with TUTCA LLC for a total contract amount of $326,463.39 for the Tanya Court Improvements Project. I am 25214, reporting conclusion of contract number 24125B with Granite Construction for a total contract amount of $740,984.10 for the Kinnick-Nack Mud Shack Road Improvement Project. I am 25218, informing the Assembly of the request for the manager's signature on the agreement for mutual aid, automatic aid for emergency services between the borough and the city of Houston. I am 25219, informing the Assembly of a grand amendment for the State Homeland Security Program for time extension only that will be presented to the manager for signature. I am 25220, informing the Assembly that the Land Management Division will be conducting a competitive sale of previously approved and offered tax foreclosure properties in the fall of 2025. I am 25221, reporting the conclusion of contract number 2552B with CGC Services for a total contract amount of $417,336 for the Wasilla High School Boiler Upgrades Project. I am 25225, informing the Assembly of the manager's signature on a memorandum of understanding regarding the Alaska State Department of Transportation fiscal year 2025 Port Infrastructure Development Program Grant application for the Port McKenzie multimodal freight expansion project. I am 25226, informing the Assembly of the submittal of a fiscal year 2025 Port Infrastructure Development Program Grant requesting $6,281,645 for the Port McKenzie Cell One replacement and dry storage project.
Are there any comments from the assembly on the IMs? Okay, hearing none, then they are presented. The next item on our agenda is audience participation. We have two times for audience participation in, on our regular meetings. And if you testify at this one, then you will not be able to testify at the later audience participation. If you testify at this one, that does not preclude you from testifying under a public hearing on an ordinance that is up. But it doesn't allow you to testify both times on audience participation. I do have a sign up sheet here, and I will read those names, and the people will then will come forth, and they have three minutes. When I am through with the sign up sheet, we'll open it to anybody, both those in present and those that are on the phone. So, Fran? Yep. You'll need to turn the mics on, please.
You can leave it on, too.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Madam Mayor and Assemblymembers, I appreciate the opportunity to come before you. There's been a number of people that have had a reaction to some of the insertions of the language that's been in the voting bulletin. And it's my understanding that the Assembly did not go through due process to advertise the public comment for the language that was put in front of the bulletin. It's surprising that the Assembly chose to memorialize a very partisan member of the public in a year, when we've seen a lot of senseless assassinations. Charlie Cook was just one of many. The preamble is totally inappropriate within a voting bulletin. It starts with a note, "In memoriam of Charlie Cook, 1993 to 2025. What does Charlie Cook has to do with the Matsui Borough and our local government? Local governance is Matsui Borough Assembly business, not the highness act of shooting that occurred in another place in another state. Charlie Cook was not a nonpartisan orator preaching brotherly love, such as Mandela or Dalai Lama. His rhetoric was an extreme rightist point of view, causing division in communities, especially on college campuses. Pope Leo noted that Kirk's rhetoric led to polarization within communities. In an ostensibly nonpartisan booklet, requesting people to vote for Assembly members, why is the Assembly promoting extremism? The Assembly should not be memorializing partisan politics. This year's shooting involved many highly recognized people, such as the two senators and House Representative in Minnesota. The husband and wife were killed, and also John Hoffman, who was a senator in Minnesota, was shot nine times, as his wife and he ended up to be hospitalized. The same day as Charlie Cook was killed, there was a shooting at a Colorado high school where two class members were shot by an individual who shot himself afterwards. There has been, so far this year, at least 11 shootings in different schools, which has had 19 people have died, and 77 people have gone to the hospital due to their shootings. There's no merit to shoot anyone. Two people were fatally shot for being representatives of their state. Innocent children have lost their lives. I want to close with a request to keep partisan empathies out of nonpartisan bulletins. Thank
Hello. My name is Dave Musgrave, and I'm a Matsui voter. I'm here tonight because I'm outraged by what the Assembly did when it voted to insert a memorial to Charlie Kirk into our official borough election booklet. Let's be clear, that action was wrong. It was dishonest, and it was abuse of the public's trust. Charlie Kirk was not a local resident. He was not a neutral figure. He was a deeply partisan political activist, whose organization, Turning Point USA, has spent years in dividing Americans, demonizing teachers, and spreading disinformation. Whatever one thinks of his death, his name has no place in an official government publication that goes out to every voter in the Matsui. And yet, without notice, and without public input, and without the item even appearing on the agenda, the Assembly voted to, the Assembly voted for this. And, sorry, I got mixed up with the other. But this is not governance. This is propaganda. It was inserted at the last minute, without public comment, and every member of this body went along with it. I've had conversations with some of you, and you've told me, I did not vote for this. I invite you to check in with the clerk. This was a unanimous decision. The right to vote is sacred. The election booklet is supposed to inform voters, not influence them. By attaching a tribute to a national political figure, you blurred the line between neutral civic function and political messaging. That's a dangerous precedent. This isn't about Charlie Kirk. It's about whether the Borough Assembly and its use, will use its power responsibly or abuse it to push an agenda. If you can add a memorial to a divisive political operative today, what stops you from adding a Bible verse, a campaign slogan, or a party endorsement tomorrow? You have dishonored the neutrality of our elections and insulted the intelligence of the voters you serve. I'm asking you to do three things. One, publicly acknowledge that this was a mistake. Two, commit that no political or religious statements will ever appear in official borough booklet again. And third, if you believe in the integrity of our democracy, retract and repudiate this misuse of public trust. We deserve an assembly that unites, not one that exploits strategy for political ends. You work for all of us, not for one party, not for one ideology, and not for one man. Thank you.
Do I need to turn on? No, I don't. Thank you. I came to make a similar complaint. Before I do that, I wanted to stop first. And I want to thank you. I want to thank all of you for public service. I've been involved in politics in Alaska my entire life, including working for the legislature during the time that our mayor was served there. And I understand that nobody runs for public office, their local office, with all the power and glory involved in it. You all had a commitment to your community, and you made a commitment to work here and to represent us, and I appreciate your service. Thank you. That leads me to the decision that you made regarding the publication for a brochure. I believe that was, decision was wrong. I believe that as legislators, as government people, you have to make the best decision you can with the information you have at the time. And I believe that, and I will support you in doing all that. This decision was wrong for a lot of reasons. And I want to tell you how it impacted my family. I've lived all my life in Alaska, where people have very strong religious and political views, and they hold them very dearly and very closely. But it has never divided us as neighbors and as Alaskans. I grew up in Fairbanks, you know, where the dark side of the moon met with politics and became the Libertarian Party, as near as I can tell. The point being is that we all worked and lived together, and we all held those beliefs, and they didn't divide us. The most important place for those beliefs is my local government. I depend on you to build community, to keep us united, to keep, the things that matter to my life and my family is in your hands. It's local government. It's where it's at. And the decision that you made in honoring this person, whose rhetoric and partisan beliefs puts a target on my family members. I have children and grandchildren, who are Alaska Native and African American. I have children and grandchildren who are non-binary, and who are married to people who are transgender. These are people whose lives are at risk because of the rhetoric of the person you chose to honor. The way my family protects ourselves from this is that we don't allow that into our homes. We don't listen to that news. We don't follow it on the social media. We don't let it into our lives. You took that decision away from us. You brought that into my family, and that was wrong. And you divided us. I don't feel safe in my community. I don't feel that my family is being represented here. You've made it very clear that I am not part of the people that you choose to honor. That's why that was wrong, and it has no place in our local government.
Ginger? Ginger? Could you come back and state your name, please, for the record? Will you state your name for the record, please?
My name is Ginger Baim, B-A-I-M. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Irene Wagner?
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Assemblymembers, thank you for having us. My name is Dr. Irene Wagner. I am here to express serious concern regarding the recent inclusion of a memorial for Charlie Cook and the phrase "In God We Trust" within an official Matsui Borough Election Guide. This edition was made without prior notice, public discussion or opportunity for citizen input. That's my understanding. The Borough Election Guide exists to serve one purpose, to provide voters with clear, neutral, and factual information about elections. Introducing political or ideological messaging into that document undermines its integrity and risks eroding public confidence in the fairness of our local elections. The issue is not about faith or freedom, freedom of speech or personal belief. It's about public trust, transparency, and equal treatment under the law. When a government document honors a politically affiliated figure or inserts religious language into a civic context, it ceases to represent all citizens equally. Such actions blur the essential boundary between government neutrality and political or religious endorsement. Equally troubling is the lack of transparency. Any modification of an official election material must be subject to public notice and comment. To act otherwise contradicts the principles of open government and procedural fairness that define our democracy. I respectfully request the following actions: immediate removal of the Charlie Cook memorial and the phrase "In God We Trust" from an election guide; a public acknowledgement and clarification that the borough's election materials will remain strictly neutral in the future; implementations of a clear policy regarding advanced public review before substantive changes are made to any official election publication. In a diverse and democratic community such as ours, government neutrality is not a courtesy. It is a constitutional and moral obligation. Thank you for your attention and for safeguarding the integrity of our public institutions. Thank you for your time and all you did.
Good evening. My name is Esther Huddleston. I am not speaking out for Meadow Lake's RSA Board 27. I'm speaking on behalf of myself. The first page of the packet shows Meadow Lake's road service area board, road improvement project list. The two roads that I would like to address is Gunflint and West Buttercup Drive. The next page shows Gunflint as an unmaintained road for the Matsui Borough, and this is part of Gunflint which I have concerns. They want to spend $1.5 million of taxpayers' money to redo the entire road and to pave 1.29 miles of the road. I can see spending $1.5 million on repairing the existing Matsui Borough maintained road from Skyview to King Arthur, because it's a high-volume road which takes motorists to the Parks Highway to Houston. I cannot see spending taxpayers' money on the unmaintained part of Gunflint. The unmaintained part of Gunflint comes to a dead end. There are approximately 20 homes down the road. There's a private airstrip down the road. The properties in the area are approximately 10 acres, large lots. It's not a high-volume road. At the end of Gunflint, there's a private airstrip with no trespassing signs everywhere and signage that says "no" through traffic. It's clear that the public is not welcome at the end of Gunflint. My question is, why would you spend $1.5 million on a road to nowhere with approximately 20 homes when you would not do it for other roads? I hope the Matsui Borough investigates who's been maintaining the road. The road itself was a red flag to me, so I did some investigating and discovered two RSA Board members live down the road. The page that has the resolution shows the two RSA Board members' names who live on the unmaintained road on Gunflint. Back in March, these two individuals wanted to increase our property taxes. This was before I was on the RSA Board. I'm concerned about the ethics on this issue because they wanted to increase property taxes, and now they want a $1.5 million road. Ethically, I can see fixing the road to qualify for road maintenance without redoing and paving the entire road. Attached, I have some photos of West Buttercup Drive. It's an industrial road, low-volume traffic road. After driving on many paved roads with so many cracks with the road with tar repairs, it brings another red flag to me because Buttercup does not look like a spider web with a bunch of tar repairs. I would say that Buttercup is in fair condition. If the road is being upgraded for tractor-trailers, then this upgrade would make sense to me. If not, then I'm questioning the reason behind this road being upgraded. I hope that the Matsui Borough investigates this matter. If you look on... And that's it. Thank you.
Peg Redding? Peg?
Hello. I'm going to read a letter. My name's Peg Redding, and I'm here on behalf of Pat Chesbrough from the Matsui Democrats. She's out of the country, so I'm going to read her letter to you. "Assembly Members and Mayor, the Matsui Democrats were surprised at the posting of a large photo of an individual at an assembly meeting. The inclusion of a memorial statement for that individual in the November election pamphlet and adding the words 'In God We Trust' to that informational document. We are unaware of the criteria used to post memorial tributes in public meeting spaces. Are all Assembly members free to display such items during public meetings? Assembly member duties are described this way: The Assembly approves the budget, sets the mill rate for taxation, appropriates funds to provide for Borough services, and establishes policy which is executed by the administration. I understand that Member Fahnoff admires the individual, but how does his role as elected official connect to the public display of his personal thoughts? What is the purpose of the election pamphlet? Is it an information item or an opinion document for Assembly members? The election pamphlet contains information to voters. This issue includes a memorial to an individual. How does a memorial qualify as information to voters? What are the criteria for inclusion of a memorial to an individual? Must that person be a Borough resident? What has that person contributed to the citizens of the Borough? How is a person nominated to be included? Can Borough residents nominate someone to be included? Who are the "we" in the statement "In God We Trust"? Is it only the Assembly? How does inclusion of this statement qualify as information for voters? Does the Borough government adhere to the concept of separation of church and state? The Matsui Democrats respect those that serve the people as elected officials. Further, we respectfully request answers to our inquiries. In short, are Assembly members free to display personal tributes at official Borough meetings? Is the purpose of the election pamphlet for information only? What are the criteria for inclusion of a memorial to an individual in an informational publication? Can anyone nominate an individual for this honor? How does inclusion of the phrase "In God We Trust" qualify as information? To whom does the "we" refer? Thank you, Matsui Democrats. Pat Chesbrough, Chair.
Hannah?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Assembly Members. I drove up here from Talkeetna. Hannah Petrick. I drove up from Talkeetna today because I actually agree with the message printed in our election ballot pamphlet. Freedom of expression is indeed the cornerstone of democracy. It is true that far too many people have faced violence in their struggle to defend the First Amendment. However, choosing to highlight one individual's name, specifically Charlie Kirk's, on our Borough's election ballot pamphlet is entirely inappropriate. If you are a supporter of Mr. Kirk and find it difficult to see why this is a problem, I ask you to consider this: If it was Melissa Hortman's name at the top of that page, would you still have the same opinion? If Paul Pelosi had not survived the politically motivated attack he endured in 2022, would it be acceptable to include his name at the top of the page? We can all agree that it would not. Doing so would violate the neutrality that must be preserved in election-related material. I am not asking the Borough to alter the message of the pamphlet or its intent. I am simply asking for the removal of the name of a highly partisan figure. This is not an unreasonable request. It is a necessary step to safeguard the neutrality of our elections and ensure voters can make their decisions free from any pressure or appearance of political influence or endorsement. By including Charlie Kirk's name, the Borough unintentionally undermines the very principle it seeks to uphold. The mention of his name reads as an endorsement of his political views, which compromises the impartiality that should define our democratic process. I urge the Assembly to remove Mr. Kirk's name from the pamphlet to preserve the integrity and neutrality of our local elections. Thank you.
Matt? Matt?
My name's Matt McHenry. Good evening. I'm very happy and thankful for you guys hearing us out tonight. Like Hannah, I traveled from Talkeetna. I'm going to read something from my phone here for you all. I had plenty of time on my drive up from Talkeetna to think about what I wanted to say to you all, and I found a lot of it to not be productive. So before the meeting, I sat down and tried to put my opinions aside and think about what really mattered here ethically and morally for the Borough. The in memoriam of a partisan individual like Charlie Kirk being added to our voter bulletin is a misuse of public resources, and it's a breach of the principle that government election materials stay neutral. I thought it was pretty ironic, first thing when I walked in, seeing no outside influence on the polls. You know, within 200 feet, you're not allowed to influence anything on how we're voting. So I think having a memorial for a very partisan individual on our voter ballot was definitely an interesting choice. Political violence has no place in our society. That's... That's true. I think we all agree to that. Neither does an in memoriam in our ballot. Thank you, guys.
Linda?
My name is Linda Spohn. I want to thank Assembly Members Fahnhoff and Bernier for their kind words, prayers, and moment of silence for Charlie Kirk. Thank you all for the memorial in the voter guide. Charlie Kirk was exceptionally intelligent. When asked how he got so smart, he simply said he read a lot. Charlie Kirk loved his Savior Christ Jesus. He loved his country. He was pro-life, pro-marriage, pro-traditional family. He was respected by young and old. My point is, it matters what you read. What you see with your eyes, hear with your ears, what you immerse yourself in is who you become. It's a reflection of what comes out in your actions and words. At the top of Charlie Kirk's reading list is the Bible and the U.S. Constitution, his choice, and that's what he reflected. Now contrast that with what our local Matsui Borough librarians fight to keep in our taxpayer-funded libraries and schools: obscene, perverted, vulgar, evil material that glorifies perversion, drugs, and alcohol. This Assembly voted unanimously to name a path in Sutton after a librarian who was on the Library Citizens Advisory Committee. She will vote that some of the challenged books are obscene, but never votes for removal. So we have the librarians at one end, still purchasing additional obscene material for our local libraries, but at the Library Citizens Advisory Committee end, they can never be removed. You may as well name your path "The Path to Hell" because that's what the path, the Matsui government institutions are on, infiltrated with Marxism, Socialism, and Communism. The expected outcome of trash-in is trash-out. It's dehumanizing and brainwashing. Charlie Kirk went to young people to tell them not to drink, smoke, or do drugs. He spoke against Marxism, D-E-I-L-B-G-T-Q, transgendering and mutilating minors. He spoke against abortion and pornographic material. He went to young people because he saw the need. He cared, and he loved his country. We are truly at a turning point. Which way is the Matsui Borough going to turn, left or right? May God bless, protect, and guide each one of us through the shed blood of Christ Jesus, our Lord and Savior. Thank you. In addition, if I have a minute, there is really a good article at SusanDowning.com by David Ignell, I-G-N-E-L-L, that everyone should read, in SusanDowning.com. Thank you.
Okay. Doug Hill? Doug?
Mayor, manager, clerk, Assembly. Thank you for allowing me to express my freedom of speech. Even got a public speaking introvert out tonight. My name is Doug Hill. I said that already. I'm a nonpartisan voter and a Matsui Borough voter. I'm opposed to political violence, physical and verbal, and I'm saddened, discouraged, and distressed when it occurs. I'm here to talk about the recent addition of a memorial to victims of political violence in the official Matsui Borough election brochure. I believe a nonpartisan memorial would be fine. An election brochure must remain neutral, nonpartisan. In my mind, the Matsui Borough election brochure was de-neutralized by specifically naming a well-known national political figure in the memorial. I'm opposed to adding the name of any political figure in this particular publication for this purpose. I find it ironic that the addition of a memorial to the election brochure aiming to support freedom of speech was not publicized, and the public was not provided with the opportunity to exercise free speech regarding the addition to the memorial. Non-neutral official government election materials are, in my mind, an offense to free speech. Election materials must remain neutral to maintain public trust. Please remove or neutralize the added language from the election brochure. Please prevent this appearance of partisanship from occurring again. At a time when it seems that attempts are being made to stifle free speech, I would like all of us to remember that in the U.S., freedom of speech is still a fundamental right that applies to everyone, regardless of race, creed, color, or sex. Thank you all for your service, and thanks again.
Angie Focker?
Hello. My name is Angie Breaker, and thank you for having me or allowing me to speak. Hello, Clerk and Assembly Members. I'm a Matsui voter, and I'm here to speak out about the recent addition of a memorial to victims of political violence which was added to the official election pamphlet. I have several issues with this change, the first being that this change was not on the agenda and was adopted without an opportunity for members of the public to comment on. It is your job to receive input from members of the public, and you failed to do that. That brings me to my second issue with this, and that is the election pamphlet is very much the wrong medium for anything like what was added. The official election pamphlet is for election-related issues only. If the Borough wanted to make a statement regarding political violence, you have several other more appropriate avenues in which to do so. I'm asking you to remove the statement from the election pamphlet and to issue an apology to the public. Thank you.
Okay. So my apologies for the next person, because they've written their name, but it's sort of written over Angie's name when she had the G that came down on the line. So my apologies. It looks like it's maybe K-R-I-S, Krista? Is that right? M-E... Here's that.
I think it's M-C-C-I-O-K.
Is that right? Do we have a Krista? Do we have anybody that starts with K? How about that? I know it's a K! No? Okay. Well, we'll come back then. Okay. Let's see. Linda?
Linda Sloan.
Sloan?
The second Linda Sloan?
Yeah. Yeah. Linda Sloan.
Okay.
The other Linda was Linda S, too.
My name is Linda J. Sloan, if you want to differentiate.
Okay.
Joy is the middle name, in case you need more differentiation. Mayor and Assembly Members, I'm here to make a statement in opposition to the inclusion of the memorial to Charlie Kirk in the official Borough election pamphlet. I didn't know much about Charlie Kirk before he died, but have read and watched many of his debates and gathered a lot of information about him since he died. The main things I knew about him was that he was definitely an operative for President Trump and very key to his successful election. He also did not contradict Trump's lie that the election of 2020 was stolen and promoted the J-6 gathering, although he apparently did not participate, or he denies participation. With this in mind, I do not see that it is appropriate to list a specific memorial to him in our election pamphlet. It was very tragic that he was killed, and I certainly decrie this another act of political violence, and feel the outrage and sadness of those who knew him personally or who were part of his movement and looked up to him. We might say that we could balance this out by including other names of political assassinations, such as Melissa Hortman and her husband, who were assassinated in an act of political violence very recently, and John and Yvette Hoffman and their daughter Hope, who were targeted and nearly murdered in the same rampage. John Hoffman was a Minnesota State Senator, and Melissa Hortman was Speaker of the Minnesota House of Representatives. However, I see value in keeping this election pamphlet guide completely nonpartisan, and it would probably be better to leave it devoid of any memorial than for the dominant party to select in a one-sided manner. The added piece in the memorial, quote, "and other victims of political violence," end quote, softens the partisan aspect a little bit, but I think it would have been better left as the original motion reaffirming civil dialogue and peaceful engagement. Thank you for noting my opinion about this matter. Thank you.
Okay. Ellen?
My name is Ellen Vandavis, and Madam Mayor and Assembly Members, thanks for the opportunity. Another voice in saying it's a betrayal of the public trust to memorialize one person that has nothing to do with our Borough, and it needs to be retracted, and so does the "In God We Trust." Charlie Kirk, nobody should be shot and assassinated, but he actually made several statements calling for the assassination of public figures. I'm not sure we want to memorialize somebody who's urging people to shoot other people like you just because you're a public figure. So let's not memorialize partisan politics like Dave Musgrave and Dr. Irene Wagner. I support the three-part thing. Retract this. Retract the "In God We Trust," and let's... Thank you.
Okay.
My name is Ellen Vandavis, and Madam Mayor and Assembly Members, thanks for the opportunity. I'm another voice in saying it's a betrayal of the public trust to memorialize one person that has nothing to do with our borough, and it needs to be retracted, and so does the "In God We Trust." Charlie Kirk, nobody should be shot and assassinated, but he actually made several statements calling for the assassination of public figures. I'm not sure we want to memorialize somebody who's urging people to shoot other people like you, just because you're a public figure. So, let's not memorialize partisan politics like Dave Musgrave and Dr. Irene Wagner. I support the three-part thing. Retract this. Retract the "In God We Trust," and let's never again see anything but just pure information about who's running and keep our elections at a nice, high level of civility. So, we'll be watching. If you're working for us, take this out. If you're not working for this and want this on the election brochure, that's a clear indication that you care more about political influence than serving all of us. Thank you.
Michael? Oh, here he comes. Good. Thank you.
I apologize for my terrible handwriting.
Yes, all right.
Madam Mayor, Assembly Members, I appreciate you taking time out of your day to be here and listening to us. I probably appreciate your undivided attention as well and not looking down at your screens. I, as many others here, want to discuss the inappropriate addition of the Charlie Kirk memorial in this election brochure. I've always thought of elections, I've worked at a few, they should be a safe place for people to vote in their own way without being influenced by an outside factor. You have to have signs certain distances away. You have to have no clothing representing party lines, and that should remain. It was an inappropriate use of resources. It should have been open to public discussion, and it should not have partisan interest in an election brochure, where people should not feel pressure from any direction. I would request the removal of it, as well as the removal of any religious statements, because that can also pressure people in its own way. You don't get to decide how people feel about these statements, but they should be nonpartisan and non-pressuring. Thank you.
Michael? Michael? The clerk tells me you didn't say your name.
Oh, sorry. Michael. Michael Hannan.
Yeah, thank you. Jackie?
My name is Jackie Goforth. As a battle-scarred retired manager of the post office, I knew in advance that if I spoke out against innocents stealing books designed to groom children to sexual perversion, that there would be retaliation. I expected it. I knew it wouldn't just come from the wrongdoers either. It would come from everyone they're friends with, associate, or anyone who thinks that parents who wish to keep their child innocent is somehow harming it. The first attack to my intelligence came from the Matsu Parks Recreation and Library Manager. That's the first page of the handout. I'm going to speak to that in a bit, but first I want to bring up the more than two-year continual attack where I've been called names. I've endured assaults on my abilities, my appearance, and my Alaska Courtview history, my onslaught on writing, talent, and career. And in June, I endured an attack on my character and integrity by a sitting councilman in Palmer. That incident just so happened to involve their Public Works Director. So now, I'm having an issue with my property with the borough Public Works. Is this part of the retaliation effect? How am I supposed to know? And one more item before I review the handout. If anyone wants to call out my testimony as a lie, I have some words, please. Video evidence. So, now to the handout I brought. You see the first page? That's the library manager. What did he say? He said, "The patron, that's me. I consistently refuse to accept the legal test of how obscenity is defined." Really? Let's turn to the second page. This is the law that shows exactly how obscenity is defined. It includes terms like average individual, reasonable person, prevailing standards of adult communication as a community as a whole. Nowhere does it say that a small group of supposedly superior people get to be the ones who decide obscenity. Nowhere. I believe this problem originates with the American Library Association. Page three, please see that. The first slide of their program called Queering the Library. I didn't include the rest of the slides because I think it speaks for itself. The A.L.A. is using their nonprofits called Friends of, and then the library name, to push this agenda. If you look up the members of this nonprofit, you're going to find some familiar names. They're the ones who are widening their attacks now to include library board and LCIC members. The American Library Association has been, had their influence removed from 19 states and several counties. I previously handed you the letter from South Carolina. Page four is their posting notice from Montana. Now, I want to show you something many don't know. Librarians are not all on board with this assault on children's innocence and parents' rights. Slide five is the answer I got to my online query. What did it say? "Some librarians report feeling ostracized inferring reprisals for their views." And if you look at the last slide, that's an actual librarian response on Twitter. "Yes, many of us are alarmed and not sure where to turn for support. We face being cast out of the profession and watching radicals come out of the library schools as revolutionaries. Professional conferences are all about pronouns, decolonizing, and querying everything. And for anybody who doesn't want 'In God We Trust' on anything in the government, please look at your money. It's on the back of it." Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and the Assembly. I always look forward to the opportunity to thank you all for your community service to us and the good job you're doing. Thank you very much. Today, I'd like to talk about two issues for your consideration. The first one has to do with the fact that we're entering into a season of darkness. Winter brings short daylight hours and darkness, and also brings bright lights on cars. That's what I want to talk about. The light, the state doesn't have any limits on the luminous of your headlights, and as people get older, especially women, they're very, very sensitive to bright lights. I talk to many, many, many people that do not like to drive at night, which keeps them from going to meetings, church events, social events, things like that. There are some states that limit the luminous of headlights, and I think I would like you to consider a possible solution to that problem. I think it's California. Washington has something. I think they limit to 1,600 luminous. I'm not sure. There's a lot of research on this topic, and I think the only solution would be is to keep, prevent these halogen lights from being sold in the first place. There's some way that the borough can do that, pass some kind of a, it can be voluntary from the parts stores or something that just limits the bright lights. I mean, some cars have four bright headlights with a light bar, and it's like the sun's coming down the street. It's very dangerous, because you can't see if the blinker's on, if someone's turning one way or the other, and it totally blinds you for a limited time. So, that's number one. The other one is a moose, moose on the road. There is a universal or statewide signal that you use if you see a moose on the road to warn other passengers, other drivers, that there's a moose on the road, and that's the emergency blinkers. Most people don't realize that it's a, you know, that there's a way of warning people that there's a danger on the road. Some people will flash their lights, but in most instances, people just drive by the moose and don't let anybody know that there's one by the road, possibly getting ready to cross. Emergency blinkers would let people know. So, I'm just asking the borough, if there's a way to public, publish that on your website or get information out that if you see a moose on the road, put on your blinkers. Thank you.
So, that was a list of the people that signed up, but we will now open it up for anyone else.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Assembly. My name is Kathy Kaiser, and tonight I'm representing myself. When you walk across a particular public square in Berlin, Germany, you'll often notice people gazing intently at a single spot on the ground. As you draw nearer, a glass panel embedded in the pavement reveals an underground room lined with empty bookshelves. This haunting memorial known as the Empty Library speaks through absence. Hidden beneath the square, the bare white shelves stand where books once were, the works of authors whom the Nazis banned, exiled, and silenced. The empty space below symbolizes the 20,000 volumes burned in this very place on May 10, 1933. On that day, members of the Nazi-German Student Union, encouraged by their professors, carried out book burnings across the country as part of a campaign against the un-German spirit. The books targeted for destruction were selected from blacklists compiled by librarian Wolfgang Herrmann and seized from private homes, public libraries, and universities. This all started innocently enough when Herrmann was asked to make lists of harmful and undesirable literature available to the public. Using these lists, heavily armed assault troops searched libraries of universities and institutions, bookshops, and lending libraries, removing books. Public libraries were pressured to clean up their own inventory, and the books culled were handed over for public book burnings on May 10. Before the burnings, organizers distributed their so-called "12 Theses," a manifesto urging university students to cleanse German language and literature of Jewish influence and return German culture to what they called its "pure roots." Books were consigned to the flames with the proclamation, "Against decadence and moral decay for discipline and decency in the family and the nation." The scene at the May 10 burning of the 20,000 books was described as funeral weather because heavy rain repeatedly doused the flames until the fire brigade resorted to pouring petrol on the pyres to keep them burning. This week is "Banned Books Week." It's celebrated across the nation at libraries and bookstores with displays mostly. Our five borough libraries have no such display or recognition because of the negative climate in our borough surrounding public libraries, and that is due to you, the Assembly, making decisions to perpetuate this negative environment. The Empty Library Memorial was erected 30 years ago with bronze plates set into the ground containing the inscription, "That was but a prelude. Where they burn books, they ultimately burn people as well."
You'll have to turn the mic back on so it'll be green. There you go. Yeah, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Janice Norman, longtime Wasilla, Urbale resident. First of all, I want to address the Charlie Kirk issue. At first, when I learned about Charlie Kirk four years ago, I didn't follow him. I thought he was, I don't know, someone just pushing an agenda for people. And then this year, I started listening to him because I could tell that he was realizing there was something bigger than politics going on. There was an evil that's taken over the world, and he was just pushing, I see, for people to just come together and realize that there's something bigger than all of us that was going on. I don't necessarily agree with him being quoted in the election thing, just for that reason, that there are some people that don't believe in God, or they don't believe in it like some of us others, and I think that we need to be fair about that. So, I hope that this is something that you guys will talk about and that we can correct. But for the record, I like Charlie Kirk. I liked his message, and I thought he was doing a lot of good for people that believed in God, didn't believe in God, whether they were left or right or whatever. But anyway, so now, the other thing that I wanted to talk about was, again, the fuel excise tax. We don't want that tax. If our property values are going to be raised, which is going to increase our taxes, that's one thing. I don't want that either, because I don't know where the money is going. If you're building more roundabouts using our taxes, stop it. We don't need roundabouts. We don't need a lot more lights right now. If our households are going broke, we can't afford more lights on the streets right now. Right now, we need to be tightening down on government and saving our money. I'm tired of the spending that's going on, and I really don't want you guys using the fuel excise tax as a little manipulation string. Oh, well, you know, if you vote this in, we'll use this to reduce your property taxes that we're going to raise. Don't do it. We don't want either taxes. And as far as going back to the Charlie Kirk thing, I hope that you guys are able to sit down and talk about it, because this is huge. Anyway, thank you.
And then we did get a new sign-up sheet. Jim? Oh, sure. Go ahead.
Thank you. Hi, thank you for your service. My name is Mabel Wimmer, and I just want to speak about how we were in Alaska. I've been here a long time, and my neighbor could be a Republican. My neighbor could be a Mormon. I'm a Presbyterian, and we all lived together, and we knew that our beliefs were accepted, and we helped one another. I just want to say that I ran for State House in an area that was very dangerous, and you wouldn't think of Alaska as being dangerous politically. And, you know, maybe some of my ideas didn't match up with my community, and I received threats. People shot over my house. People threatened to burn down my house. My house burnt down. I didn't live in a shack. It was valued at $3 million. I lost my pets. Maybe my name should be in the borough voters' thing, but what I'd really like is for Alaska to be Alaska again, where we respected and we were decent to one another, and we cared about each other, no matter what our faith was, no matter what our gender identity was, because it happened back then, too. We had neighbors that were different from us, but we loved them, and if they needed anything, we were there for them. Could we please bring politics more neutral and not do this kind of thing anymore? Thank you for your time.
Come on, Jim.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the Assembly. My name is Jim Sykes. I'm from Lazy Mountain. I was trying to navigate the borough website today, and I was looking for the election pamphlet, and I got good help, and the first thing that popped up is the memorial. And I thought it was very well done, expressed wonderful sentiments. I agreed with the memorial, but I also reflected on the code. I'd like to read you a couple things from your code. Subject to the provisions of MSB 2515015, all borough elections shall be nonpartisan. I thought about that because this particular memorial was a good one. It didn't say anything about the Hortmans, the lady who was the Speaker of the House in Minnesota and her husband who were gunned down, or, as Mabel mentioned, here in Alaska, we've had political violence. But I just thought it was the wrong place. This election brochure is supposed to be about the election and nothing else. And it further states, back down in 2505120, "Not later than 20 calendar days prior to each regular or 15 days prior to each special election, the clerk shall prepare and mail one election brochure per registered voter household, containing information approved by the Assembly pertaining to each proposition on the ballot, candidate information to include candidate's name, year of birth, Alaska residency, and a 200-word or less position statement by the candidate, simple ballots, and other general voting information." Period. Didn't say anything about memorials, high school champions at the state football match, nothing. We want voter information here. So, I think that what is there could be perceived by some people as a call-out to a special group of people using government funds, and I don't think we want to do that anymore. And so, I don't want to see it in the future. I think if it had been somebody else, I would feel the same way here. Why did we get here? Well, the framers of our Constitution and then the subframers of local government decided that we should be nonpartisan in every municipality and every city across the state. Now, why would they do that? Well, they decided that we should have the opportunity and the responsibility to try and work locally with each other as a community to solve our local problems in a way- and work locally with each other as a community to solve our local problems in a way that wasn't contentious and politically motivated like the legislature. That was one basic reason. The other basic reason is, this state has a long history of being non-political. Add up all of the political parties and the membership in them, and the majority is still not registered to any political party, and it's been that way for a long time. So my request is, please respect the non-partisanship that we have in our being here and try to resolve things as best we can together, more than creating anything that could be perceived as not being inclusive. And that's all I've got to say, but please reflect on it because I'm very serious about it, and I wish you all well in your jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark?
Every time I pay out my taxes, whether it's borough, state tax, or fuel tax, federal tax, any kind of tax you pay, I think it says "In God We Trust" on that currency. So I don't think that's out of context. And honoring Charlie Kirk was the right thing to do. It's not a partisan thing. He was assassinated. It was a very tragic thing for our country and the whole world. People from around the world took notice. And what was he about? Encouraging people to get out, encouraging young people to vote. Can you imagine going to one of these college campuses and say, hey, you disagree with me, come to the front of the line? Where do you see that? So thank you for having some courage and doing the right thing. You're not partisan by honoring somebody who was assassinated. And as far as the gas tax goes, I went to one of the meetings, it was only a few people there, probably 10 or so, maybe. It was very few. And people need to really think about what's going to happen here. People that commute are going to get hit the hardest, and the tourists and the recreational people, very seldom drive on a borough-maintained road. You just think about where they're going if it's Big Lake, Petersville, Eureka, driving over Hatchet Pass. These are state-maintained roads. So think you're going to get somebody else to pay, that's just dreaming. Let's keep our taxes down and not hit these commuters, the people that it's costing an arm and a leg already with the price of vehicles. And I probably missed this somewhere in there, but you can correct me. I didn't see anything in there on the electric vehicle, how they're going to contribute to this. So you talk about fairness, it's not a very fair tax. So please, thank you for your time.
Anyone else that would like to?
I'll get up there.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Dave Johnson. I'm here from the Valley, and I just thought I'd stop in tonight because I heard all the things that were going to happen. Okay, first of all, I don't think we should have a road tax. All right? Got that off my chest. Second thing, this book stuff that we're talking about, I don't have a problem with books. I don't want you using my money to buy that filth so kids can look at it. That is wrong, okay? And that brings an interesting situation there because if you're training kids with that kind of trash, you get the stuff that happens in the college that Charlie Kurtz went up against. These kids are being indoctrinated. Stop it. We don't need this. You'll see it like Netflix has gotten busted now for putting that kind of stuff in front of children. They're children. Protect the damn children. That's your responsibility as adults and parents. Let's do it. I know a lot of people out there, for some reason, think it's okay to put this stuff into children. That's wrong, and they're going to have to pay for it when God gets a hold of you because you're just ruining them. That's not to happen, and it really just irks me off to no end. Leave the kids alone. Get the books away from them. If you want to go get the book and buy it and read it yourself, go right ahead. I don't have any problem with that. I have a problem when you put it out there in a public and you're spending my money on it. That's my problem. And then Charlie Kurtz, again, he was a good man. He went out, he got people encouraged to speak out, exercise your First Amendment right, learn how to exercise that First Amendment right. That keeps people from using their Second Amendment right. That's what's important. Talk about the problems. Talk about it in public. Get it out there. Get it off your chest. All right? Okay, thank you for your time. No tax.
Okay, anybody else? Yeah, it's Terry.
I'm Desri Terry, and I just wanted to thank you for honoring Charlie Kirk. He was an American. He was a national figure, and even our, our whole country flew our flags at half-staff. So I don't see a problem with honoring an American, just like I don't see, I don't think that there would be a problem if people would read what was written. It was beautiful. It was very encouraging, calling for unity and civic duty. I appreciated everything in the bulletin. I really do appreciate it. Also think that, you know, as Americans, we need to be able to cross party lines and honor, just like when Martin Luther King died, people all over honored him. It wasn't a party thing, and I don't think it should be. You know, if 9/11 had just happened, we would probably have a memorial honoring the people who died, and I don't think that that's an issue. I think the issue is the hearts of people that are so divisive, that see everything as political and party lines because, you know, we're all people. We all have good and bad features. We all have identities. I'm, you know, I have a side that I'm on, and there's another side. As far as the books go, we live in a world where you can get anything you want online. You can buy any book you want. If you want your kids to read something that's not in the library, you can get it. But I can tell you, I can go in the public library, and I can't find very many Christian books. I can't find very many history books. I've gone and looked and tried to find the history of Alaska, you know, trying to learn about this state and, you know, learn about the people who made this beautiful place and, you know, created all the government that we have, and I can't find it. Why? Because there's so much good books out there. We don't need any controversial books. If they just filled the library with good books, we'd be, everybody would be happy. There's enough books in the world that you could fill our libraries over and over and over again and never have controversy.
My name is Bill Campbell. Been here a long time. I didn't know who Charlie Kirk was until somebody shot him, and I went on Snopes, and I would encourage everybody in this room to go to Snopes and look at some of the things that he said and/or alluded to in his property, what he was saying. And I'm going, Melissa Hortman was an elected official who was gunned down, and in my opinion, this man was an internet guru guy, Yagod. And back to, in 1957, Yagod was put on our currency. It wasn't part of anything that the original founders took care of. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you for listening to all of us on all sides. My name is Abigail Saltynstall, and I had not planned to speak tonight. I haven't planned out what I wanted to say, but I've been listening to some of the things that have been said, and I think it's very clear that there is a specific set of values that are associated with Charlie Kirk. They're political, they're social, they're cultural, and they have been stated very explicitly here. So clearly, Charlie Kirk is a partisan figure. I think what happened to him is horrific. I'm horrified by what happened to him. I didn't agree with most of his values, but I'm horrified that he was assassinated. I think it's a terrible thing in our country that this is happening, and it is happening to figures on both sides of the political spectrum or the whole thing. But by putting him in a ballot, he's not running for election in the borough. The opinions that are supposed to be in an election booklet are those of the candidates, and they're going to cross the political spectrum because it's the candidate's view. But it is not the place of the borough or the Assembly to choose who we should memorialize. I deplore his assassination, but I don't want one person chosen and another person not chosen to be put in that booklet. That booklet is supposed to be about the specific election at hand and the neutrality that has been recognized here, the fact, I thought about it as I was driving here, and I saw where the political signs stopped from the polling. And there's a reason for that, as you well know, and you probably support and enforce that, and I ask you to do that in your own publication as well, to honor all the Valley residents and let them make their choices.
Anyone else that would like to give input on any subject to the Assembly? Yeah, Travis, come on.
Hello, my name is Travis Friesen. I live in Palmer. I was not planning to speak, but I've heard a lot of people speak about Charlie Kirk. I have some opinions about him. I don't, maybe, do you think, people think that putting his name on a voting ballot would change their ways to vote? I mean, would it? Maybe, maybe not, but people, but I think that, you know, we should honor him because he was assassinated and with the, and people are saying, you know, that Charlie Kirk had nothing to do with our state. Well, look, you could go any other city in the United States, they'll have a boulevard or a road named after Martin Luther King, in spite of the fact that he had nothing to do with any of the states at all. Anchorage has a Martin Luther King Drive. He hasn't, he had zero, he had nothing to do with our state at all. So that's something to keep in mind, and people are complaining, I hear people complaining about "In God We Trust." I mean, we have "In God We Trust" on our money, and we also have it in our, in our national songs in the registry. So there's something, there's something to be said about that. And another thing I need to get off my chest is that when I'm driving on the Glen Highway, where the roadwork begins, there's a sign that says the left lane, the right lane ends, so it'll be two lanes. Well, the road's now obviously four lanes now, so I think it's about time that you take that sign down. So thank you.
Anyone else would like to address the Assembly? Do we have some people? We do have? Okay, go ahead, whoever's first on line.
Hello, my name is Liz Jackson, and I'm unable to attend the Borough Assembly meeting tonight in person, but I wish to have my statement read into the record. I appreciate the statement in the voter information brochure regarding the importance of free speech as a cornerstone of our democracy, the integrity of our elections, and our shared commitment to those freedoms. However, I must express my great concern about the decision to single out one individual by name. If the brochure is to honor victims of violence, then it should do so inclusively, acknowledging all such individuals, from those who have been targeted for their speech to the innocent victims of the school shooting in Colorado that occurred the same day Mr. Kirk was shot. While I understand that Mr. Kirk was meaningful to some members of this Assembly, many others experience his rhetoric as divisive, exclusionary, and cruel. Do you think to display his image prominently, observe the moment of silence, and offer a prayer specifically for him in an official government context sends a message that not all of our members in our community are valued equally? In the future, I urge the Assembly to approach such recognitions in a way that reflects our community's diversity and shared values, honoring all victims of violence equally and refraining from highlighting any individual above others. Also, in a footnote, one individual spoke earlier about how Mr. Kirk encouraged people to vote, and that is correct. He encouraged people to vote for Donald Trump. Donald Trump chose to have the flags at half-staff to honor Charlie Kirk, who's been noted for getting out the young vote for him, a truly partisan character. Thank you for your time.
Next person on line, please.
Hello, my name is Mark Harris, A-T-A-R-R-I-S. I've heard a lot of talk about the divisive individual, Charlie Kirk, and I really want to talk about somebody who's not divisive, Dr. Dorothy Helm. Dot Helm died in 2000. Dot was the type of person that tried to involve everybody, get out of there, exercise using trail systems and things.
Sir? Sir?
Yes?
Can I get you to roll up your window if you have your window down? All we can hear is road going by. I apologize, but we've stopped your time, so I could ask you to...
I don't have a window open. I would like to talk closer to the phone. Hopefully that helps.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, so Dr. Dorothy Helm was instrumental in getting more organizations that help trail systems or manage trail systems. The University of Alaska, Burbank, Madison School of Farm, UAA, Massachusetts College, State Parks, and that is good, in the borough, and helped create the Madison Green Belt Trail Association. She realized that people didn't use the trail system out there because they were afraid of getting lost, didn't know where they were going, was not marked very well. After her retirement, she worked very hard to learn computer programming and GIS systems and helped create the trail system that's out there, put up signs. She was out there doing a lot of the signs by herself, and I know that there are some ordinance to honor her with a memorial plaque, which I think is important to help community, reward somebody who didn't really expect any reward for what she did. She never said what she was doing out there. She was just doing it to help the entire borough, not any one group. So I have to say, thank you very much.
We don't have anybody else on line? Okay. I'll give you that are here that haven't testified yet one more chance. Okay, seen no one, then I'll close audience participation. We're ready for a break. Okay, so let's go to have a break until 8 o'clock.
Okay, uh, so let's go to have a break until eight o'clock. I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting back to order, please. Uh, Assembly, Bonoff, are you in the building?
I guess you took a rest from break, but...
Okay. Well, I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting back to order, and we are at the section for public hearings. And, uh, Madam Clerk?
Ordinance 25-104, an ordinance naming of, excuse me, an ordinance naming an area of the Crevasse Marine Trail System in memory of Dot Helm. If you're on the phone and would like to speak to this, press star three.
Yeah, I'm gonna go ahead and open up the public hearing. We do have one person calling. Would you like to come and testify?
Hello. My name is Colleen Vega, and some of my questions have just been answered. But I think this is a great idea. I think Dorothy Helm deserves to have something set aside for her in memoriam. Um, I just know that historically, um, the planning department was looking at this property for something else. And at that time, I learned that the Crevasse Marine Trail is actually sitting on what is borough-owned land that is set aside for the dump. And at that time, again, this has been probably eight or 10 years ago, um, the timeframe was around 2050, that that center area, the subway, express lanes, all that stuff, would in fact be consumed by the dump. I find that sort of awful in itself, but it would really be not very pleasant to have a memoriam set to somebody with a bench in front of the dump. Um, I've since learned, just in, in just in the last little bit there, that, that may be a longer-range plan. It's not gonna be 2050, probably. It's, it's set out for quite a bit longer. But just something to think about, it wasn't addressed in this, um, in this ordinance, and so I just wanted to get those, some of those things cleared out because I, I would like to have a nice place for her to be, to be memorialized, and if, front of the dump would not be it. So thank you for your time, and, uh, again, I got some of my questions answered, but just something to consider. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Is there anyone else that would like to testify on ordinance 25-104? Do we have anybody on line, sir? We do not? Okay, one last chance. Anyone wanna address the Assembly on ordinance 25-104? Okay, see no one, then I'll close the public hearing. Assemblyperson hours.
I move to adopt ordinance 25-104, and I can speak to it.
Yes, you may.
Um, you know, as noted by the speakers here, Dot Helm is one of those people who contributed to our community and will contribute for years to come in the number of people who are gonna enter the Crevasse Marine Green Belt System who will not get lost. Um, people who are of a certain age and, uh, have been in the valley for a while can remember entering that system, and you weren't sure. It was kind of like the, the maze. You weren't ever sure if you were gonna get out. Um, and Dot was instrumental in getting signage in there, and that is one of the most popular, most well-used by old and young, by runners, by horseback riders, by, uh, moms with strollers. On any given day, you'll see people out with their dogs and, um, from all over the valley in our core area, and it's some of the only non-mountainous terrain, and it's a real gem. And Dot, uh, has played a big role in making that really usable to the public, and they have responded. Um, I think you've seen in the letters and the testimony, some of the things that she's done. She was also incredibly recognized on the trails, getting out. Um, so I think to respond to Ms. Vega's comment, I don't believe a location has been chosen, but there's many locations within, um, that trail system that have been suggested. She was a big part of the experiment farm as well, so that trail system runs through there, and, and I think a good, I'm glad you made the comments, but a good spot will be chosen. It will not, um, be nested to the landfill. Although I would note that the plant, long-term plans with landfill include rerouting those trail systems, so as the landfill expands, um, we'll be able to, to reroute those. Um, so I would just say this is recognition for somebody, um, I think, uh, Dr. Harris said it, that, you know, didn't ask for recognition, and I heartily ask for your support for it.
Further discussion? This, oh, Assemblyperson Sumner, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have a question, maybe it's for staff, but, uh, where the funds for the memorial bench and plaque come from?
Good evening, for the record, Gillian Morrissey, Community Development Director, and to Assemblymember, uh, Sumner through the mayor, the, we actually have a, a bench that was eroded and needs to be replaced, and so we actually have one that we already have identified. The funds in order to do a very small plaque is, is minimal. Um, we also have a planter that we already have, um, at the park shop that we can use, and, uh, we will be collecting wildflower seeds just from the land in order to plant in the planter.
Further discussion? Questions to staff? Okay, thank you. Is there any objection? Okay. Hearing no objection, then legislation passes.
Ordinance 25-105, an ordinance amending MSB 5.25038, service area number 24, Talkeetna Fire Service Area, annexing parcels located in the area of East Raleigh L Circle, South Leroy Davis Road, and Riddle Avenue into the Talkeetna Fire Service Area without the placement of the question on the ballot and finding that it serves the public interest. The accompanying resolution 25-087, a resolution finding the annexation of eight parcels in the area of East Raleigh L Circle, South Leroy Davis, and Riddle Avenue into the Talkeetna Fire Service Area serves the public interest. If you're on the phone and would like to speak to this, press star three.
Uh, open the public hearing on ordinance 25-105 and resolution 25-087. We do not have a sign-up sheet. Is anybody who would like to testify? Do we have anybody on line, sir? We do not? Okay, I'll close the public hearing. And Deputy Mayor?
I move to adopt ordinance 25-105 and resolution 25-087.
Discussion by the Assembly? Is there any objection by the Assembly? Hearing and seeing none, then the legislation has passed.
Ordinance 25-106, an ordinance amending MSB 5.25145, service area number 136, West Lakes Fire Service Area, by annexing six parcels off the west to sit in a parkway into the fire service area without the placement of the question on the ballot, and finding that it serves the public interest, with accompanying resolution 2588, a resolution finding the annexation of six parcels off the west to sit in a parkway into the West Lakes Fire Service Area serves the public interest. If you're on the phone and would like to speak to this, press star three.
So open the public hearing for ordinance 25-106 and resolution 25-088. Anybody that would like to testify on either one of these? And we do not have a sign-up sheet. Do we have, and we do not have anybody on line? Okay, I'm gonna close the public hearing. And Assemblyperson Gamble?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance 25-106 and accompanying resolution 25-088.
Okay. Any discussion by the assembly? Is there any objection? Hearing no objection, then the legislation passes. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 25-107, an ordinance accepting and appropriating a grant from the United States Fish and Wildlife Service and required match funding from the fiscal year 2023 area-wide budget appropriation for Cottonwood Creek at Fern Street Fish Passage. With the accompanying resolution 25-089, a resolution approving the scope of work and budget and authorizing the manager to enter into an agreement for Cottonwood Creek at Fern Street Fish Passage and approving the time extension of fiscal year 2023 area-wide budget appropriation for fish passage improvements, match funds. If you're on the phone and would like to speak to this, press star three.
I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing for ordinance 25-107 and resolution 25-089. Is there anybody that would like to address the assembly on either one of these? We do not have anybody online. Okay, so I'll close the public hearing. And Assemblyperson Sumner?
I move to adopt ordinance 25-107 and resolution 25-089.
Any discussion by the assembly? Is there any objection? Seeing and hearing none, then the legislation passes. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 25-108, an ordinance accepting and appropriating $10,712 from the Matsu Disc Golf Association for the Alcatra Saw Creek Project. With the accompanying resolution 2590, a resolution approving the scope of work and budget and authorizing the manager to enter into a grant agreement for Alcatra Saw Creek Project. If you're on the phone and would like to speak to this, press star three.
I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing for ordinance 25-108 and resolution 25-090. Anyone that'd like to address the assembly on either this ordinance or resolution? We have, we do not have anybody online? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Assemblyperson, phone off.
I move to adopt ordinance 25-108 and resolution 25-090.
Is there any discussion by the assembly? Is there any objection to the legislation? Hearing no objection, then the legislation passes. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 25-109, an ordinance accepting and appropriating $319,837 from the Alaska State Department of Health and Social Services for the Human Services Community Grant Matching Grant Program with the accompanying resolution 25-091, a resolution approving the scope of work and budget for the Human Services Community Matching Grant Program. If you're on the phone and would like to speak to this, press star three.
I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to address ordinance 25-109 and resolution 25-091? Yes, come up, sir.
You'll have to turn the mic on. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Michael Bowles. Madam Mayor, Mr. Manager, members of the assembly. I just wanted to ask that when looking at these funds and reviewing grant applicants, that you please seriously consider utilizing these grant funds for institutions in the borough that really help people that are getting out of situations where they're coming away from addiction and things like that. Set Free Alaska is an outstanding organization. Please consider them. Please do not continue to support these social justice programs that are funding these programs that do nothing for the community. All they do is push Marxist rhetoric back into the community. So, please, when using these funds, our taxpayer money, federal taxpayer dollars, in the form of these state grants, please fund people getting well. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. Deputy Mayor.
I move to adopt ordinance 25-109 and resolution 25-091.
Discussion by the assembly? Any objection to the legislation passing? Hearing no objection, the legislation passes. Madam Clerk.
Ordinance 25-110, an ordinance approving appropriation of $800,000 from the Central Matsu Fire Service Area Fund Balance to purchase a Wildland apparatus with the accompanying resolution 25-093, a resolution approving the scope of work for a project to purchase Wildland appar, why, sorry, Wildland apparatus for the Central Matsu Fire Service Area. If you're on the phone and would like to speak to this, press star three.
I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing for ordinance 25-110 and resolution 25-093. Is anyone would like to testify on either this ordinance or this resolution? Do we have, and we don't have anybody online? Okay. Whoop. Oh, okay. I'm sorry, Assemblyperson McKee, did you have a comment?
I, yeah, I did, but I was, I was thinking it was still part of the public hearing thing. Can I go ahead now, then?
Okay, let, let us just move. I closed the public hearing, so let us move.
Okay.
The motion, and then under discussion, I will acknowledge you, okay? And Assemblyperson Sumner?
I move to adopt resolution 25-110 and resolution 25-093.
Okay, and we'll have some discussion. Go ahead, Assemblyperson McKee.
Yeah, I was, you know, I read the attachment to this thing. And I, I guess my first question is, has there, it, the thing is, we're wanting to use this kind of machine so we can get to hard-to-get-at places. Have we ever had a time where we couldn't get to a place? And had we had this particular kind of almost-million-dollar machine, we would have actually gotten to that place? If that question is clear, I hope it is.
We, we have someone coming that will be able to answer your question, sir.
Alrighty.
Go ahead, sir.
Good evening, Mayor, Assembly, staff. Ken Barkley, Director of Emergency Services. Through the mayor, Assemblymember McKee. Your question's about have we had to use this vehicle to get off-road for fire suppression? This is a type-three apparatus. It's one of the most versatile apparatuses in our fleet. This apparatus can fight structure fires. It can go off-road. It also has pump-and-roll capability, which means while you're driving, you can spray water in front of you. You can pre-wet an area prior to the fire getting there. And we've had to use this probably more than any other apparatus. It's the only one that can do all these things and go off-road. We also have car fires that we can't get to. We've had to use this apparatus. And during a wildland fire, it's the most sought-after apparatus. It's the one that Department of Forestry asks us for most of the time. And when we contract with them to use that, our crew goes with it, and we get the fire service area that it belongs to gets reimbursed.
Okay, so we already have one of these machines, then? I, is that, maybe I just misread that. We already have this machine? And if we do, then what are we talking, $800,000 for?
So, this, through the mayor, Assemblymember McKee, this is, this apparatus would be at our, staffed at one of our staffed stations is where it would be housed at. And when we get deployed, or we go to use these, these vehicles, we need them in a timely manner. So, we need to strategically place this type of apparatus throughout the borough. So, throughout the borough, we do have several of them. But when Central Matsu sold three of their vehicles, two of those were ones that could also fight wildland. And they're using the money from that, those three sales to help purchase this one vehicle.
Yeah. Okay, that clears it up. I just thought that we didn't have one, and if we've done without one all these years, I thought maybe we don't need it. But obviously, it appears that we do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any of the other assembly have questions, to staff? Okay, thank you, sir. Is there any other discussion? Is there any objection? Hearing no objection, and the legislation passes. And the next item on our agenda is audience participation. I guess we do not have a sign-up sheet. But if anybody that hasn't testified under the first audience participation, if you would like to address the assembly on either any issue at this time, please come forward.
Good evening, good evening, Madam Mayor and Assembly and staff. My name's Stephen Merrill, I live in Palmer. I just wanted to follow up to the, the previous public hearing on the DOT HEM award in honoring her and just to thank Assemblyperson hours for that, bringing that forward in the assembly for voting for that unanimously. I live near the Green Belt. That system is a gem. And to, I know her tireless work, DOT HEM's tireless work out there is, I'm glad it's going to be acknowledged and appreciated in this memorial. It's, I've been a part of a nonprofit trails group for years. We don't want to work out there. We've run a youth mountain bike program out there. The signage, improving the signage is always, has been a goal. And, and I think that's been, the slow progress that's been made out there has been fantastic. And, you know, I just want to say thank you again for that support, so that's it. Thank you.
Uh huh, thank you. Anyone else would like to address the assembly? Do we have anybody online? We do not? Okay.
All right, Michael Bowles again. Madam Mayor, Mr. Manager, members of the assembly. So, yep, so over the last few weeks, something's come to my attention while I've been on the campaign trail. It was brought to my attention that there, at the time, there's this idea that our land assessments are going to go up. Last year, as we all know, our property building assessments went up, which, yeah, the mill rate came down, but then our property assessments went up. So, we ended up paying more property taxes from it is what it is. So, now I understand that the land assessments are going to go up, and not just a little bit, but my understanding is they're going to go up four to five times what they're currently set at. At, the first time I heard that, I was just like, okay, whatever, it's just a voter letting me know how they feel about something. And then I heard it a few more times. So, this, this is a concern. Another concern is that apparently this is only going to happen in the Butte, Butte area, and Kinnick River Road and Old Glen area. So, I reached out to our assessment office, and I spoke with Art, and he confirmed that. My understanding is, the way he explained it was, it's just easier to start that way. It's not going to be borough-wide. So, I would ask that you please look at this, if this is happening, if this is coming down from the assembly, from administration. I don't know who is doing this or where this is coming from. But this is going to hurt some people really badly if this happens. The way Art explained it is somebody on one acre with a house, their value, let's say their land's valued at 30 grand. It'll go up to 60 grand. They may lower the building, building, excuse me, assessment slightly to try to bring it into alignment with what it is now. Sure, okay, that makes sense. But he said that somebody owns, that owns 40 acres, that might be valued at 100 grand. That land value may go up to $400,000. And I can't even imagine what that might do to somebody who's a farmer, that farms at 40 acres. And that's going to increase their taxes annually by, I don't know, three, four grand. So, I know I own 10 acres. What's, what's mine going to go up? Am I, am I looking at, you know, 200, $300,000 on my land assessments? So, is my property tax going to go up, you know, this, after January? So, please, consider this, consider the residents in Butte and in Kinnick River Road, Old Glen area. This, if this happens, from what I understand, it's going to be pretty detrimental financially for a lot of people. So, thank you.
Uh huh, thank you. Anyone else that would like to address the assembly? Okay, do we have anybody? We do not have anybody online? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close audience participation.
Consent agenda, resolution 2599, a resolution amending the scope of work for HVAC system for central landfill, warm storage facility to enlarge municipal solid waste cell for, resolution 25101, a resolution amending the allocation percentage breakdown of opioid, I'm sorry, I'm having difficulties tonight, remediation funds, AM 25123, word of bid number 2637B to TETCA in the contract amount of $131,750 for site improvement activities for a future warm storage fire station and truck fill site. AM 25126, a word of proposal number 2652P to N5B Geospatial in the amount of $499,974.28 for aerial imagery acquisition 2026-2028.
Deputy Mayor.
I move to approve the consent agenda as read into the record by the clerk.
Is there any objection? Hearing none, and the consent agenda that has been read into the record has been approved. Madam Clerk.
Resolution 2594, a resolution amending the scope of work for the online auction services project to complete the material site development reclamation project. It's pulled by Assemblymember McKee.
Okay, Assemblyperson McKee, would you like to move? And then you can discuss. Assemblyperson McKee?
My objection.
Is she off?
Can, can you hear me now?
We can.
It just told me my, okay, yeah. When I read it through about the third time, I thought, you know what? That's, that's probably something I don't need to mess with. So, I'll just let that one go back in to the pot.
Yeah.
Okay, and you will need to move it, please, since you pulled it. So, go ahead.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I, I moved to adopt RS 25-094, and I'd like to speak to it. And I'd like to just withdraw it.
Go ahead.
Thanks.
She's good. She's good.
Good.
I did.
Is there any other discussion? Hearing no other, is there any objection? Okay, so then the legislation has been approved. Madam Clerk.
AM 25-117, a word of bid number 2557C to Kendall Ford of Anchorage in the amount of $337,920 to replace six fleet vehicles. And it was pulled by Assemblymember McKee.
Okay, Assemblyperson McKee, would you move the AM, please, and then discuss?
Yeah, I move AM 25-117.
Okay.
And I guess this is just a general, am I, did I push the right button here? Can you hear me? Yeah, no?
Yes.
Am I, am I there? Okay.
Yeah.
You know, we've been hearing, especially since we talked about the fuel tax, we've been hearing about, well, isn't there some other way that the borough could save money? And you start looking at these things much more closely when the public is saying, hey, you know what? We don't want to do the tax. We want you guys to spend what we do take in in a, in a, in a better way to really, you know, maybe hunker down a little bit. And I'm just not certain, just as an overall statement, that we need this fleet of, I guess it's brand-new vehicles, six of them? Because I looked over what they were being used for, and I'm just going to go no on this because I just think if we look a little harder, we don't probably need to spend $337,920 bucks. So, that's just my comment on it. We, I just don't think we need to, we're not in a place where we have kind of the money to spend on something like that that I, that I personally think we could look a little harder and not have to do.
Okay, we have staff.
Through the mayor, to Ms. McKee. We have a life cycle replacement program. There's always opportunity where you can choose to defer. But the challenge is, the more you defer, the more it stacks up. And at some point, the bill's still going to come due. I believe the average age for the vehicles that we're replacing is nearly 20 years old. So, there is an element of how much staff time, parts, you know, and those types of things do you want to have to deal with in vehicles? And so, yeah, I, I mean, I can understand that's, that's a price tag because it's multiple vehicles. But the challenge is, you know, there's a lot, we get a lot of windshield time in the valley because we have a large geographical space to cover. So, we put a lot of miles on these vehicles pretty quickly, especially for things like co-compliance, assessments, road maintenance, because they're on the roads, not constantly, but a lot. And because of the space that we have to cover, we put a lot of miles on these. So, it's not, it's both a mileage and an age issue. And the challenge is, I mean, if we want to defer it, we can defer it. But it's only going to cost that, those needs to stack up over time, and that bill will come due at some point in the future.
Okay, thanks.
Further, further discussion, Assemblyperson phone off.
Mr. Brown, I just did the math. It's $56,000 per truck. I am as very limited. I am as very limited. Do you know what kind of vehicles we are getting, or maybe we get the purchasing officer to, because I am fully understand Ms. McKee's concern, and I'd like to learn more about this before I vote on it.
Russ Kraft, purchasing director. To Assemblymember Fana, through the mayor. I believe attached to the legislation itself are the quotes for the individual vehicles that are being purchased. There are, one, two, three, four, five Ford Rangers, a full-size regular cab, one-ton four-by-four, and then another crew cab, four-by-four, that are being purchased. The breakdown is on there in terms of pricing. These were purchased through the state of Alaska fleet contract. We utilize the fleet contract because they're leveraging a lot higher buying power than we'd have. That contract is bid out with anticipating not only what the state is going to require, but also what they anticipate that the political subdivisions would also be requiring. So they get the discounted rates, and they allow the political subdivisions to go ahead and piggyback off of that.
On the page, if we start scrolling from the very top, in that, because I was able to scroll it down, so, the, those Rangers, it says 38,730, but then, I don't know which, and I think 38,730, that's the number I see, but why is the math about almost $18,000 difference? Is there, I'm missing something?
To Assemblymember Fana, through the mayor. The price that we're paying is actually, so on the Ford Rangers, we'll take, like, the very first one labeled vehicle number one, the base price on that is 38,730, but then the optional equipment is added on to it, so with the adds, the total for that vehicle itself is 39,505.
Yeah, that's still a big difference compared to 56,000, because even the most expensive one, which is, I believe, number five, right, vehicle, or number seven? Number five, I think, is the most spent, that's at $49,000, so, something, eight? I thought it said six. Replace six? Okay. Okay, so it's eight replacing that? Okay. Is there a reason why this is a, specifically from Anchorage, not from the Wasilla dealer?
It's the distributor for South Central on the state contract.
Okay. Because I have a, somebody who's real close to works at the Kendall of Wasilla, and they said whenever, when it comes to the service, if the vehicles are purchased outside of their dealership, they're kind of, when it comes to service, they're not in a hurry to service them, and that's the, I know that directly. So, I'm kind of interested why it's specifically Anchorage, but that's, do you know any explanation for that, or not really?
To Assemblymember Fana, no, I, I mean, we have access to that, to that state bidding document, but Kendall is Kendall. I mean, they, Kendall may have made a decision, a business decision, that their state of Alaska fleet contract for South Central is going to all funnel through that Anchorage distributor. When you, they offered various pricing, I mean, the main three price points are delivered to Juno, delivery to Anchorage, and delivered at Fairbanks. So, those are the three that we get to choose from. Those, I mean, they're brought out to us, they deliver the vehicles to us, but everything runs through Kendall Ford of Anchorage.
Okay.
Assemblyperson Campbell?
Yeah, not really a question. Russ, you answered my question about the state bid list, more of a comment. I mean, almost $40,000 for a standard cab Ford Ranger just blows me away. I mean, it's about the, it's $10,000 less than that 150 super cab and the F-350 regular cab for a small truck. Can you tell me, Mr. Manager, what the Rangers are going to be used for?
I don't.
Is it just employee transportation?
Through the mayor, I don't know which department these would be assigned to. I believe the way it was, the six of the vehicles go into assigned to department, two of them will go into a fleet pool, so that people that don't put enough miles on vehicles that warrant an assignment can pull out of a pool of vehicles. So two are going into a pool, the other six are going into department. So, I mean, typically, it's appraisers, you know, their assessments, co-compliance officers, could be, I think the road maintenance superintendents, we might buy a little bit different rig for them, because of the nature of the work that they do. But, yeah, it's employees that are out doing fieldwork.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Assemblyperson Sumner?
Yeah, was there any consideration on, like, a Ford Maverick? Is that on the state bid list? That's slightly cheaper than a Ford Ranger.
So, to Assemblymember Sumner, through the manager, or through, I'm sorry, through the mayor. The vehicles within fleet are controlled by operations and maintenance. The fleet manager is the one that works through it, along with the public works director. These are all looked at early on during the budget. I mean, all of these vehicles were approved initially through the budget, and were budgeted I don't have the exact information in terms of why they went with this. I questioned it myself, because we have a, we currently have an escape that we use, and it's being converted over to a pickup truck. I questioned it. I understand why. I mean, it's, the pickup is more useful, so that's why they went ahead and they switched over to a pickup in terms of an escape, because we don't have a dedicated vehicle anymore, we work out of the pool. So, these vehicles were sized, you know, based on what the fleet manager and the public works director identified, along with whoever it's going to be assigned to.
Okay, for the discussion? One, sorry.
Follow-up question. When I read this, I actually Googled it, and it seems like we're not really getting that great of a deal, because, you know, I could find online that, you know, a Ford Ranger for the same price as what we're paying on these, the state sale. Is there an avenue to negotiate a bulk sale outside of the state fleet sales?
To Assemblymember Sumner, certainly, we can bid these out. We've tried that in the past. We run into the same situation with vehicles that we run into with a lot of other items. If I put this out to bid, I'm going to have Anchorage or Valley-based sales offices submit bids, I'll probably get one bid on each one. I won't get a Fairbanks dealer, I won't get a Keen Eye dealer to bid. These guys are just, they respect each other's areas and territories. This way, I mean, the idea is that we're leveraging that bulk purchase. I mean, we could certainly try it. Periodically, we do double-check pricing. I mean, we'll, we'll get pricing that comes in on Sourcewell contracts, NGAP, these other ones, and we'll look at it, and we'll say, you know what, that looks like a good price, but we're going to test the market, and we'll issue a bid. We'll solicit it to see if we can beat that. We don't typically do vehicles, because we just don't get much of a response with vehicles.
Follow-up. You know when the last time we bid out vehicles was?
To Assemblymember Sumner, through the mayor. We were doing that a lot during COVID. Essentially, because during COVID, vehicle shipments coming up from the lower 48 were almost non-existent. So, the fleet contracts, they, they basically pulled the delivery times. They told us, we can try to get you one order, but we can't guarantee it would be delivered. So at that point, we were actively soliciting for vehicles that were on the lots. It really reduced down what we could get in terms of the buildup of that vehicle, we had to accept what was out there. And we paid a lot more for vehicles during, during the COVID era than we are now.
What?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion or amendment to remove.
Can I ask you just to hold it? Because we have some people down here that want to discuss. Okay.
He's on it, I was doing, is going to do the same thing, I think.
Okay. Assemblyperson Hours? No? Okay. All righty, now I'll recognize your motion, thank you for being patient.
I'd like to move an amendment to remove the Ford Rangers from this, and, I mean, if you look, I can't speak to that. If you look at the list of the replacements, you know, we have a 2008 Chevy 2500 with 170,000 miles on it, we have a 2014 F-150 with 236,000 miles on it. I mean, it's a high mileage, and we have specific uses, like one was a plot truck. I think we can easily justify getting those vehicles. I think the heartburn that some of us are having are over these Ford Rangers, so maybe we should try and ask staff to try and bid them out and come back.
Discussion on the amendment. Deputy Mayor?
I agree with Max. Thank you.
Okay.
Excuse me, this is Dee, how many, how many Ford Rangers on there? I could do the pages here, but how many of that would pull out?
We're going to get it just a minute.
It should pull six.
Three?
There would be six, Assemblymember McKee.
Six pulled out?
Yes.
Yee-haw. I think this is one of those things where, and I'm speaking to the amendment, I'm in favor of it, I'm just thinking this is, this is not a must-have, in my opinion, and we are in an economy where everybody's looking at what we're spending, and I, if that's a good thing, so I'll be voting for the amendment.
Okay, Assemblyperson Fana?
So, Max, are you trying to just eliminate the Rangers off the thing, and we just get the other two? What does the amendment will do?
Yeah, I believe my amendment was removing the Ford Rangers, and we'd be getting the other two. And then, of course, the implication to staff is, like, you know, they're receiving our direction to, you know, bid them out and come back.
Okay, so just then it'll go back to the rebidding, and maybe get more bids that way, instead of the government-expensive contract, yeah? Okay.
Further discussion on the amendment? Do we have any objection to the amendment? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, then the amendment has passed. So now we're back to AM 25-117 as amended. Further discussion or further amendments? Is there any objection to the motion passing as amended? Seeing and hearing none, then the motion has been approved. Go ahead, Madam Clerk, I think there's one more.
There is. AM 25124, award of bid number 2645B to Stepper Construction, in the contract amount of $264,975 for the design build of a covered storage building and operation and maintenance facility, pulled by Assemblymember McKee.
Go ahead, Assemblymember McKee, will you move and then discuss?
Yes, I'd like to move AM 25-124. And again, I'm looking at what kind of time is we're in. I don't know where these vehicles have been parked before this, but if it was at my house and I didn't have the money to build a brand-new garage, I'd just throw a tarp over or just something like that. I just, I just think this is one, another one of those things, if we looked around to find a place where we could pack, park the backhoe and whatever else is on that list, we could probably find a place. Or, because, again, that's, you know, that's getting close to half a million bucks, I just don't think it's something that we must do at this time. If we want, if we want the public to believe in us and saying that we're being careful stewards of their money, and particularly when you put that with the excite of the field tax, I think we'd better be showing them that we, at least for my, for me, I want to show folks that my money is where my mouth is, I'm going to, I'm going to, we'll take the hits and try to show you that we're going to send your money wisely, so I'm going to be voting against this. Thank you.
Assemblyperson Sumner, comment?
Yeah, I just, I mean, I, Dee, I hear you, and I read the, read this and thought the same thing, but, you know, I mean, there's an adage, you know, don't be a penny wise and a pound foolish. If you look at the equipment that they're wanting to store and cover storage that's currently parked outside, that's equipment that's in the elements and depreciating. And then we'll be right back to square one, where we're replacing some of these things, you know, and then we'll be agonizing over the replacement cost of quarter-million-dollar excavators, and snow blowers, and asphalt recycling trailers. You know, I can tell you, the last excavator I bought was $300,000, you know, and they're only going one direction.
Further discussion, Assemblyperson Hours? Go ahead.
I know we have a ambulance station in the industrial area that we, is going to be replaced by Station 39. So, is that facility an option for becoming storage? Or, I can't remember off the top of my head if it was already slated to become something else. Did your lifeline leave?
I don't need the lifeline on this one. Through the mayor to Ms. Nowers. Yeah, it is an option, but that facility's an old facility, it's in an industrial park that could better be served in commercial use, and it's a utility suck. Like, it is, that building costs us a lot of money from a utilities perspective. I would rather have a covered cold storage than I would a facility that we could sell, that's the intent, for more money, and not have the utility bill that goes along with it. But yes, it's absolutely an option. I've been trying to get rid of that building, if you can't tell.
Deputy Mayor?
Questioning staff, how big is this building? Got a square footage there?
Thank you.
No, the building, yeah. No, this one, the $264,000 one.
I don't know if I know a square footage. Through the mayor to Mr. Bernier, we do not have that readily available.
I think it says 60 by 80, 480 square feet.
Okay. That answer your question, Deputy Mayor?
This is Dee, Mike, can I?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. So I just want to say the same thing that I basically say every time we do this, when we have an award of bid or an award of proposal, the proper time to address these cost issues and whether we actually need the thing that we're, that we're proposing to build is during the budget, it's not when we're awarding the contract. So that's all I had to say, thank you.
Okay, Assemblyperson Hours, should you have a question?
Just a follow-up. I don't think I have, I think you've answered the questions, but when I saw that the address was 1420 South Industrial Way, I assume this is, when you're talking about selling property in the commercial industrial district, this also is in the commercial industrial district? Or, I was trying to quickly get my Google map up, but can you answer that?
Russ Kraft, purchasing director, to Assemblymember Nowers, through the mayor. This is, this is property that we own, this is the O&amp;M yard, so, over at the, yeah, over at the Roman Building.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
This is Dee, can I, can I ask a question?
Oh, sure.
Fire station in the old one, 51, that's been shut down for 100 years, is there stuff over there that, is that an available place? I mean, could you just chuck out some stuff there and put that stuff in there? It's actually, I think, warm storage, actually. I guess the whole point here is, can we find some place else, another way to do this rather than spending, you know, over a quarter of a million bucks?
To Assemblymember Lee, through the, through the mayor, the old 51 building was leased. We're, we got out of that lease, it's going back to the owner now. Correct.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Assemblyperson Sumner?
Oh, I was just going to point out that, you know, in the competitive bid, you know, this was $125,000, almost less than the other bids, so, I mean, we are getting a pretty decent deal, and also, I do do this during my day job. I think this is a pretty good deal. I don't think, I could, I mean, I think I should probably call Steppers to have them build some of my buildings.
Assemblyperson Fana?
Max, on page 11, it does come the green on the thing, but at the bottom, when you do the addition one-two, the second bidder up is only like $8,000 difference, so, and then the other ones are, so if you actually look at the bottom line.
If I, if you look at the next lowest one, they did not add an option, one of the options, they did. They declined to bid one of the options, which was $100,000 from everyone else. So it's actually not that close.
Further discussion by the Assembly? Okay, is there objection to the motion to adopt?
I object.
Okay, all right. Madam Clerk?
The members in the room could go ahead and vote. Assemblymember McKee?
No.
Madam Mayor, it passed with Assemblymember Farno and McKee opposed.
Yep, thank you. All righty, we do not, that's all of them, right? They, we do not have any unfinished business. There are no vetoes. Um, work for new business when you get a minute.
For public, introduction for public hearing on October 21st, Resolution 25072, Resolution 25073, Ordinance 25112, Ordinance 25113 with accompanying Resolution 25095, Ordinance 25114 and Resolution 25097, Ordinance 25115 and Ordinance 25098, and Ordinance 25116 with accompanying Resolution 25100.
Okay, Deputy Mayor?
I moved the introduction. I move to introduce the legislation as read into the record by the clerk and set the public hearings for October 21st, 2025.
Discussion? Is there any objection? Hearing no objection, then the legislation is introduced. Uh, Deputy Mayor, vacancy report.
I move to confirm the mayor's recommendations as follows. Agricultural Advisory Board, resignation of Melissa "The Twin", Borough Area School Site Selection Committee, Richard Allen, Par's Recreation, Parks, Recreation, Trails Advisory Board, resignation of Kimberly Wakeoff, Alpine RSA Number 31, Tracy Barikman.
Okay, so any discussion on the vacancy report? Is there any objection? Hearing no objection, then the vacancy report has been approved. We have no referrals, no other new business, and we do not have any reconsiderations. So parting comments, Mr. Attorney.
Uh, just let the Assembly know that, um, for the next meeting, Shannon Baudelaire and I will both be at the National Attorneys Conference, the Municipal Attorneys Conference. So Denise from my office will be here with you. That's it.
Deputy Mayor, parting comments?
I want to thank everyone for coming out. I want to thank the Lord. Dear Lord, we thank you for your love, your mercy, your grace. We ask for healing for the broken, the addicted, the lost. May they find peace in your love. Please guide our hearts to love and forgive our enemies. May we love as Jesus loves. Please cloak us with your protection from the evil that is so abundant in our society. Please bless our veterans, our first responders. We pray for our leadership, that they may follow you, Lord, to listen and to abide by your word. Please give our parents wisdom to teach the children, and the children ears to hear your word through them. Please bring a revival to our valley, our state, and our nation. In Jesus' name, amen.
Assemblyperson Hale, parting comments?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I just want to thank everybody who came out tonight to speak about our, uh, our voter pamphlet. Um, I do agree that placing Mr. Kirk's name in it was inappropriate, both in its partisanship and in its lack of publicity and public notice and opportunity for the public to speak. Um, I did oppose the, uh, the amendment that added the name, but having lost that, I did not choose to oppose the main motion, um, which I believe I actually should have. So I apologize for that. Thank you.
Assemblyperson Nowers?
I also just want to thank everybody for coming out, and I do think in moving forward that we should, um, keep a close eye on what we put in the voter pamphlet, that we are sticking to the voter information. I don't think it was a mistake to honor Mr. Kirk and the other victims, whether we should have named them all, the Hortmoons, the Shapiros. I think, I think, uh, we were responding on the assembly and Max, Mr. Sumner was responding to a horrible event that was like in a series of horrible events, like when Martin Luther King got shot. That was like stunning to the nation because that never happened. Now we're like, we can barely keep track of all the political violence. And I think the, the thing we were responding to as people in the community say, that just isn't acceptable. It's not the community we want to be in. And we, we are a country that honors free speech and we condemn political violence. And, um, so I think the, the intent of the message is that. And I think I heard everybody in the room say that, that as a community, we condemn that. Um, but I, I do think like in retrospect that we could have done that in a different place than the voter pamphlet. Um, so, um, but, you know, we get to see the community come out and we get to see all the diversity of opinion. And it, um, makes me appreciate this valley that we can have people come to this venue and tell us what, that we have a venue to do that. We're not living in a country where you can't do that. So, thank you.
Mm-hmm. Assemblyperson McKee, parting comments?
Yeah, just in, in the same thing with the memorial thing. I really appreciated the number of people that came and the level of civility with which they spoke. Because sometimes these things turn into name-calling and you just feel real uncomfortable. But the, the folks that turned out tonight, and some of you've turned out before on other issues, uh, really do appreciate. Because we, we, we were pretty hard up there to make the decisions that we make. And I appreciate your pointing out what you would have preferred in such a civil way. That's how it's supposed to work. That's when you're using your First Amendment rights in a nonviolent way. Thank you so much.
Mm-hmm. Mr. Manager, parting comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a couple of quick comments. Number one, um, and I had planned on commenting before audience participation on this, and I will just say for the concern about land values going up four to five times, that was not going to and will not happen. Um, I can just tell you that. And, and I, I do think it's important to acknowledge though, land values across the borough, the entire borough, are undervalued. Like, that's a fact. Like, that's not debatable. Go check it out if you, you, I think some of you recognize that. So that is something that we are going to have to work on. But there's a way to work on that. It's a process and it's not gonna look like a four to five time, four to fivefold increase in a given year. And it won't be targeting one community over looking at the borough as a whole. And, and just to remind the Assembly, like, in, in a nutshell, our job as an administration is to get the values to true value. Right? Even if those values, like the cost of a Ford Ranger, might be higher than you want them to be, right? We gotta follow the market. That's, that's what's important. You as the Assembly then get to choose what you do with that when you set the mill rates, right? To get it dialed into where you're comfortable with it being. That's, that's the lever. It's not the values. So it's important, because if we have disparity in the values, it's gonna create unfair situations where one neighbor looks at another and goes, why is, why is your property valued so much less than mine? Like, that's a problem. And so, yeah, we're gonna work on that, but it's not gonna look like, uh, what I have heard uh, being discussed on social media and, and that was, uh, mentioned tonight. And to remind you also, we take the input that the appraisers go out in the field, the field work that they do through the course of a year, especially in the summer when you can get out and see a lot. We bring that together, late December, January, and then every year, the assessor comes before the Assembly and tells you what we're seeing, right? And so we will do that again in January, just like we always do, before tax assessments and notices go out at the end of January. And then that kind of kicks off the budget process for us. So just to reiterate that, so for folks in the public, that's the process. Um, so we're not gonna do anything where you're not gonna have some heads up on what's happening with values before we communicate that to the public. I mean, in the terms of like assessment notices. Second note, um, good news, but, you know, I'm, I'm a manage expectations person. Uh, but I did sign a land permit today for Alaska, I gotta get the name right, Range Resources, um, for a permit in the Port District. Uh, if you noticed, there was a press release last week, uh, from the DOD awarding a $43 million grant to a mining claim out here in the west of Sytina for antimony, which is a critical, uh, critical mineral. So we signed a land permit today to give that company the opportunity to do their due diligence over the next few years and hopefully see some future for that output coming through Port McKenzie. And so I just wanted to call that attention, because they'll probably have a press release or something in the coming days, and that way you've heard it here first. That is all I have, Madam Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk, parting comment?
Wish I would have said this earlier when there was more people in the room, but we're short 19, um, election workers. 15 of those are hand counters. If you haven't signed up, please do. If you had, know anybody and you can encourage them to do some hand counting. It's really a, a training that lasts maybe two to three hours and then maybe three hours this year to hand count. And you do get paid.
Assemblyperson Sumner, parting comment?
Yeah, I wish, uh, more folks would stuck around, but I do appreciate and want to thank everyone that's coming out and sharing their opinion about our election brochure with us, you know, um, we don't always get things right. I think that, uh, I don't regret, you know, our response, you know, to the events and what we did. I think that we didn't get it perfectly right. I think that, uh, maybe it should have been different and, uh, I regret that. Of course, of course, every Assemblymember probably doesn't like their, their motions being amended, but, uh, but yeah, I mean, I think that, uh, you probably won't see that continuing in the future. Uh, I did want to bring up, uh, if you look at the introductions, we have legislative priorities on the introductions. Um, I, I feel pretty strongly looking at, you know, I've, I've gone to Juno for other, other things and I've lobbied legislators and I've pretty much seen them, you know, take your arms-length lists and throw it right in the trash can because it's too long. I think that ours is too long. Um, I think that we need to separate it and say, this is what's really important to us. And maybe have a prime, you know, primary list, secondary list, and tertiary list. You know, we need to, we need to indicate to Mr. Brown and his staff, like, what we support, you know, what we would support. But we also need to, you know, kind of hold some accountability to our representatives and say, this is what we really want. Achieve this. You know, the other stuff is nice to haves, but this is what we must have. And so I'm gonna be making that motion at the next Assembly meeting. I, I would probably invite everyone to look at that list of legislative priorities and think what your, you know, most important thing is for our community. And maybe what your second most important thing is for the community. Thanks.
Assemblyperson Gamble, parting comment, sir?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've got a, a couple of things here. First of all, I guess to the manager, I, I am a little concerned about information about land valuations going up by four times, going, getting out in the public from staff. I mean, um, how, how does that happen?
So there was, I don't have all the details on how information gets around the valley via social media and what gets passed person to person. From what I understand, um, somebody took a screenshot of a training spreadsheet where, because we, land expertise and modeling, we don't have a lot of that expertise. So we have an individual who has that expertise that is training two others in how to do it, how to develop a model, how to use the model and translate it to Excel, and how to do the math in a spreadsheet to actually get to values. That is the sheet, I believe, that was screenshotted, a training spreadsheet. And the numbers I saw in there were very round numbers. Um, and so what I understand is that was what was happening. Here's the model. Here's how you translate the model to a spreadsheet. This is what the spreadsheet looks like. And those values on that sample training spreadsheet were four to five times. But that's why that got shared out. And the reality is that had to be shared out by one of our employees. Like, I do know that. But I'm also not looking, I'm just gonna be kind of blunt, so I might regret what I say here.
I appreciate it.
But it's, you know, it's after nine, so, you know. But I don't want to get into like headhunting for stuff like that, because we don't have anything to hide. The reality is this stuff's public information if people want to ask for it. So I don't want it to appear like we as a staff are trying to conceal or hide something. Because I think that, that becomes worse. And so I'm not gonna go looking for how it got out. I mean, frankly, that person was probably in assessments and all they did was hurt the credibility of the job that they do. Because now people are gonna question it. That's, that's what kind of stinks about it. But the reality is, I'm not gonna go look, we're not gonna go looking for it and do an investigation and all that, because the reality is it could have been shared. It probably shouldn't have been because it, it's not, and even if those values were coming back, let's just assume that's the case. If somebody's like, I don't believe a word you're saying, those were coming back and you're intent, we would never bring that to you. We would never bring a four or fivefold increase to you for values. It wouldn't happen. I mean, Shannon, we're like, what? When we talked about it. And, and then, you know, we kind of got some ground truth on some of that today. Uh, but I want to be careful that it looks like we're out there trying to hide something, because we're not. I mean, the reality is land values are undervalued. How we choose to bring that forward, we've had to, we, we are in the process of reconciling, reconciling commercial values right now. There's a, there's a way you do that. There's a way you do it over time. You spread it out. You don't surprise people. But the reality is, we do need to work on making these things right. And this land valuing issue has been an issue in this borough for a long time. This is not a new thing. And I think anybody that's been in the valley and keeps an eye on these things, you, you know that what I'm telling you is correct. And so we're, we're gonna be methodical about it. We're gonna communicate about it. In the end, you know, even if the values do move up, and I, and I know this is a challenge, but we gotta get, we gotta get to where the market is. Because then you can use your lever to set mill rates correctly and there's fairness and parity across the borough. That's what ideal looks like. That is a tough thing to do with limited staff, turnover. Some of this stuff is complicated. Values have moved ridiculously in the past several years, in the past few years, for sure. That makes it hard to chase and get this done. But our staff's doing a better job getting out in the field in the summer, collecting data, updating inventory, which is what they should be doing. But I, but I can assure you, that's why I said it pretty clearly on the record tonight. We are not gonna bring a four or five time, time increase on land values to you for any community in this valley.
Okay, thank you for that. And, um, I would never ask you to go investigate and go headhunting for anybody. I mean, that's, that's your job and your department head's job. It's not mine as Assemblymember to tell you how to do that. So anyways, you want to say something else?
Well, I was just gonna say, through the Mayor, I, I don't, right now, I have no reason to believe that any of that was nefarious. Like, somebody was trying to undermine.
Yeah, being malice.
And in the end, I don't want it to look like there's some cover-up. So we're just not gonna play the game.
Okay, all right, thanks for that. Another thing, on August 7th, I believe it was, we had a presentation by Sue Mogar about cold and cool water inflows into, from, um, lands that are adjacent to the borough. And, um, I think we talked about putting those on our maps as information only, not to designate it as sensitive areas or, or anything. Um, so I just wanted to follow up to make sure that we were gonna do that. I know that the Fish and Game Commission uh, was very interested in that information as well. And I don't want to do anything to classify borough land in a certain way. I just want that to be on there, if possible, um, for information only. The last thing I had was, I just wanted to thank you and your staff for the Port Open House on Saturday. It was extremely well attended. Um, I only saw one negative comment, um, on social media from that when I was there. I mean, there had to be, I think we thought there was 50, at least 50 people there. It had over 100?
Probably had 200 over the course of the day.
Yeah, it was just incredible, people out there and, um, uh, it was impressive. So thank you and your staff very much for that.
Parting comments, Assemblyperson Farno?
Thank you. Be, when I first started here, I didn't know all the rules and every time somebody would come and speak as a audience participation, especially if they say something about you, and I wanted to, hey, respond. Unfortunately, I learned quick that that's not, um, how we roll here. So anyways, I wish the people that spoke here, um, that would be here to, for us to give these comments. Because unfortunately, I think a lot of times when we do make those comments, it's, um, people, the ones that would love to hear it, they would have been, at least, whether they like a response or not, they would have probably at least appreciated the back and forth, not back and forth that place response. So never have I heard, uh, Charlie Kirk's name in this building as often as I did today from the good organization by Democrats and Matsu United for Progress. They do good work. To see, uh, how well they're organized, I'm pretty impressive. And with, um, countless amount of emails that I got from the interesting app email. And with, um, countless amount of emails that I got from the interesting app email and, um, that are AI-generated, just the different versions of it, that was interesting to see. But if you guys have an eye to figure out the AI, you will have seen that. Uh, so Charlie Kirk did spoke, um, for exactly those people, so they would have right to speak like that today. And, um, that's why I, uh, I, we honored. Um, as official statement from the Democrats, I was the only one who was honored to be on their official letter. So I asked somebody during a break if they would be willing to sign, so I can later, uh, frame it and post it. Um, the gentleman refused to do that. So unfortunately, if somebody will be volunteering next time to do this, uh, from the ones who spoke, I'll have this letter with me. Um, I do fully stand by for what I said and what we did, that we added, um, memoriam for Charlie Kirk, and in God we trust, because I know that is on our currency, and I have not seen those people. I don't think they would have refused to use the money that we use. And that is, um, a, a strong, um, difference of this country, what it's founded on and its principles, especially if you have ever lived or, like me, was born in a different country, you would value this, and you'd know that this is worth preserving. Um, so I will not apologize, but I will stay firm on that. Um, and if I had to do it again, to honor somebody who stood up for, uh, free speech, for discussion, for, um, the dialogues that he had, especially with the people he disagreed in a very civil way, I would, uh, I would do that in a heartbeat again. Thank you.
Any comments? No, I didn't. I did Dee, didn't I? Dee, didn't I do you? Okay, all right, thank you. So if there's no other objections, we are adjourned at 9:12 PM.